In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, you give to human leaders the authority and responsibility to serve your people. We pray that our nation may be characterized by respect, forbearance, and cooperation. Send down upon the members of the city council the spirit of wisdom, generosity, and justice, that with true dedication they may faithfully promote the well-being of all our people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Councilwoman Caramba, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba, here.
Here.
Councilman Slakta, Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn, Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here. Okay, well, good morning, everybody. We are gonna start with public comment on agenda items only. Agenda items only, please. Good morning, Rick.
Good morning, Mayor. Rick Steinmeier. Uh, let's see, 7D. We have this water quality and quantity test that we've been doing for ten years at least, if not seventeen. Um, I just don't know how we benefit from having our water tested at the price of fifty or ninety thousand dollars a year. Um, I'd like to know what our public benefit is from that. Of course, I'm not allowed to ask questions, so... So, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Counsel, Honorable Mayor. John Pano, Downtown Alliance, I represent. I would like to address item number seven F, approval of the budget changes. Um, it's, I've come to my attention that Riverfest was cut out of the budget for this year. I ask only that some kind of transition budget be made so that it can be continued on and private organizations take it over for next year. Um, and I'm not sure how that could be done, but I do know in the past that it was put under a special project for District Five Council, and I'm just wondering if that could, something like that could be done again. The Riverfest, although it is small and doesn't draw a huge amount of people like a lot of the other events during the middle of season, does draw a lot of people at the very beginning of season and brings them here for the very start of the year. It also gets a great media coverage, which goes out to all the public just before the season opens, again, bringing them downtown and into our parks. So, just please consider funding a transition period for the Riverfest. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Other members of the public, please come forward at this time. Good morning.
Morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Kate Pagan, Poland Avenue. I'm here under consent agenda item F, also proposed budget changes. The first item I'd like to address is related to the Bald Eagle Nest at River Park. I have recently been in communication with a company related to wildlife webcams, and they have been able to get a verbal agreement with Comcast to provide data for the upload of the webcam feed. So, if considerations move forward, I'd like to, like for city council to consider adding a little bit of money to the budget to perhaps move forward with a webcam. And I'd also like to request a line item in the 2018 budget for infrastructure for the Gopher Tortoise Preserve at Dog Park. Right now, it seems that there's no distinction between the Dog Park and the Gopher Tortoise Preserve, and I'd just like that to be considered for another one of our protected species.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Other members of the public? Good morning, Martha.
Good morning, good public servants up here. I have one, two, three, four, five things to mention to you, so let me get real quick. Martha Simons for the record, Somerset Lane. Okay, it seems like impossible to believe that it was eleven years ago that I talked to Nabil Yusef on Terry Street because the then-city manager and public works director, Gary Price, and Darrell Walker called me into the office and said, "We're gonna widen Terry Street." And I said, "Oh, my gosh, that's gonna take away Nabil Yusef's traditional parking," and he goes, "Well, it's in the right way." I went, "Uh-oh, we gotta do something." So, I called Nabil, I said, "Come on in here, they're gonna wipe out your parking, what can we do?" He said, "Well, in 1986, there was an EPA order for a brownfield site on that property" because of perk coming out of, he had nothing to do with it, okay? Previous operators. Anyhow, I said, "Well, let's get it done, let's get it cleaned up." They're like, "Uh-huh, it's been since 1986." Well, you know, I said, "Well, can I call DEP and find out?" Well, fortune was good that year because they had a new director there, and I said, "Hey, we gotta get this done." I cried a little bit. We got it done at no expense to the city. Eight hundred thousand tons, eight hundred tons, eight hundred tons of non-toxic material was pulled out of there, and three hundred tons of toxic material was pulled out of a perk site. We got that mess cleaned up, and now it's possible that he can use that part of his property for a parking lot. So, this is eleven years coming, he's, you know, been saving towards that. I hope you'll approve that errata sheet, it'll be great for downtown, it'll look beautiful. Okay. Nice for the entrance coming across the railroad track there. Riverfest. Okay, as your founder of Riverfest, I go with what John said. I hope our District Five councilmen will actually put that in there as a District Five City Council project, and maybe even fund it a little bit, like five or six thousand dollars. We need to talk also in the future about what to do with the, it's very hard for community events with the cost of the sheriff's department. I hope you look at that in your contract about what you can do for the policing. Maybe CPU can take over some of it instead of just the detail unit. Okay, next, the Gopher Tortoises at the preserve. In the, the first time this was discussed was in October of 2003 at a city council meeting that there'd be a Gopher Tortoise Preserve. In the master concept plan for the Parks Master Plan, there's a Gopher Tortoise Preserve. 2003 to now, what have we done? Well, we got some mitigation dollars there, I think you probably used some of those, but if you could just put a little placeholder, line item for the Gopher Tortoise Preserve for some, maybe a boardwalk or an observation platform or something there, so we can start getting that going, okay? The Eagles Nest. Thank you, Kate Pagan. Kate Pagan. I have a document, because I was on the city council at that time, I think it was 2006 or '07 or something, Johnson Engineering did the design and the work over the Eagles, I wanted to call it Eagles Marsh, not River Park, you gotta change that. Anyhow, the Eagles Nest, there's been some question, but the Eagles Nest is on the city property, I have that on the map, and it's also in the Parks Master Concept Plan, again, I think from 2012, that mentions the Eagles Nest on the city property in southwest corner of the property. I also have this, but it's like magnified, I'm gonna get you the non-magnified version, but for now, you can see that the Eagles Nest is on the city property. And I will hand that to the clerk or somebody. God bless you, thank you, I hope you support all these things, you're doing a terrific job.
Thank you, Martha. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. I have a feeling there might be several, so if you wanna go ahead and line up, that'll be fine. Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Jim Weeks, Weeks Fish Camp, Audrey, everybody, support staff. Here for a different note, I am here, I'm a future business operator down in City Butte Springs, and I am looking forward to Riverfest every year, so I'd really like for you guys to reconsider of that, helping us this year, because we know we're gonna grow it into something big as the years grow, as the city changes and we get more business operators down there. So, Riverfest is very important to us, and we know it is to you guys, and we hope that there's some way you can squeeze a budget in there to keep it rolling, till more businesses can grow and add something to it. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, Jim. Good morning, sir, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Good morning, my name is Marvin Hancock, I live in Pelican Landing on Wood Sage. I wanna talk to you briefly about an email which I sent to all of you, and it's regarding the, using the Lee County Hearing Examiner. Benita Springs, as you know and as you've built, has a properly functioning city government that is responsive to the electorate of Benita Springs. There's no need, nor it is in the interest of the electorate of Benita Springs, to delegate decision-making. Moreover, to delegate decision-making creates a terrible precedent and undermines the home rule of the city of Benita Springs. I just wanna tell you briefly that earlier this year, another past PLCA or Pelican Landing president, and I'm also a past Pelican Landing president, and I met with WCI to resolve the differences between our community and WCI. We were optimistic that a solution might be on the horizon until WCI was acquired by an out-of-town developer, and at least up until now, it doesn't appear that the out-of-town developer has any interest in talking with us, which is regrettable. So, I urge you to oppose the request of WCI communities to use the Lee County Hearing Examiner. Thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you. Other members of the public? Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Bob Luce, I also live in Pelican Landing and am the vice president of the Pelican Landing Community Association. The president couldn't be here this morning, so she asked me to speak for behalf of the Pelican Landing community. My only thing is, I think that I would encourage the board to tell the Florida League of Cities what is going on here and ask perhaps for their support, and if this becomes a litigation matter, ask for them to submit an amicus curia brief in support of your home rule. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Love the accent. I'm Peter from New Hampshire, you know that, right? Good morning, sir, how are you?
Good morning, Don Eslick, the Sterro Council community leaders, and I'm here to talk about that same item, 12A, having to do with WCI's request to try to move the consideration of the high-rises basically to the Hearing Examiner. Nothing wrong with the Hearing Examiner, except they're not local, and you want public participation in these kind of major decisions. I'm here because, obviously, Coconut Road is gonna be greatly impacted by the traffic generated by these additional four high-rises, should they be approved. So, I just urge you to retain jurisdiction in the matter. I see absolutely no reason why you ought to move something away from the point of decision, and we look forward, and I don't speak for the village, just the association, but we look forward to working with you in order to resolve this thing as best we can. Thank you much.
Thank you very much, Don. Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning, I am Irv Nathanson, I am one of your neighbors in Astero, and I serve on the Transportation Committee of the ECCL, I've been very active with it. We have recently submitted to us in Astero a 400-page area-wide traffic study, and it was prepared by the Village of Astero to indicate that the proposed density of the Raptor Bay Towers would negatively impact an already-challenged two-lane road and the safety of the residents and the surrounding communities. Let me digress for a moment here. I attended a meeting at the Living Waters Church about a year and a half ago and listened to a presentation by WCI, and to entertain you a little bit as we were entertained with a remark, we were, a question was asked, "What impact would the high-rises have on Coconut Road?" And the representative from WCI, and I can almost quote, said, "Well, people living in the high towers don't go out very much." And that was the remark, and that was quoted. The Coconut Traffic Study of April 2016 on this section of Coconut Road that's west of 41 is projected to be operating at a failing level of service in the future as developments are completed in approximately five years, and all of these statistics in these studies regarding the level of service are quantifiable. So, as my friend a moment ago just indicated, I would urge you to retain jurisdiction in this matter, because it seriously impacts us in Astero, and of course, we all have a mutual interest in this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public?
Good morning. Good morning to all of you. I'm Nancy Cohen, and I live in Pelican Landing as well, so I was going to speak to this possible decision too, to move the, this question to Lee County Examiner. I would just second what the various people have said in front of me. I think it's really important to have, have it locally decided and let the public who have to live here with the decision have input. Thank you very much.
Wonderful, thank you, ma'am. Other members of the public? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move along, and we have Attorney Theriak here, so I'm gonna make a motion that we request to address items 8C, 9A, and 12A first while Attorney Theriak is here. Is there objection to that, council?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Audrey?
I think it, item for the record, Audrey Vance, city attorney. Sorry? A roll call.
Audrey's been a motion in a second, I apologize. Further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Great.
Thank you for moving up the items for the record, Audrey Vance. The first item is something that Fred Forbes brought up as far as an update on the zoning board workshop, because we have Mr. Theriak present in person, I thought that might be appropriate time to bring this item up, if you wish to discuss it.
Well, my, I think my green sheet speaks for itself. The, a little background, I did meet with Mr. Kurlander yesterday, and he, I believe with his help that we can really make this workshop targeted to what not only the zoning board was interested in having, but also what any of us individual city council people have as issues with either the existing zoning process, development order processes and all that. In addition, I'm hoping to get inputs also from LPA who are on the fringe of zoning, and I'm sure some of them, especially the long-service ones, can make good input. I simply ask for today, what you, if you would give based on what you know, you may not know all of the facts, but what you know today, what are you the most happy with, two things, and unhappy with about the existing zoning process? I gave you mine, and actually, I kinda add to it a little bit at a discussion I had yesterday. I said, you know, another problem we have in Benita is that we have a lot of land that was zoned way back in the mid-'80s, the mid-'90s, where in that time, Lee County especially, was giving laundry baskets full of approved uses. And the problem we have is today, a lot of these tracts of land that have not been fully developed or developed at all, have had developments grow up around them that make a lot of those approved existing uses not compatible with the surroundings. And our comp plan does say that we're supposed to be only approving things that are compatible with existing or things that are approved to be in the future. So, I, we could do this one of two ways. You can verbally indicate what your two best-liked and two biggest-disliked items are, and then hopefully commit that to a little email, which can go to Arlene or Carl, and we'll gather those up and we'll, we'll start correlating those. I promised Mr. Kurlander that he would be involved in seeing this stuff as well, he's gonna get the same information from the zoning board, and he actually was very complimentary in looking forward to doing this process. I would say, I think it's possible that we will not have that workshop quite as soon as it was planned, because I think we wanna make sure we get all the inputs in that we can, so that the workshop can be more targeted to what everybody's concerns are. Doesn't mean that we'll end up adopting changes that will address every individual's concern, but at least we ought to have the opportunity to hear about it. So, you wanna, I guess we could lead off, the American asks for comments, and we can get to two most-liked and disliked items in the zoning, as you know it today.
Sure, sure. Mike, you wanna kick us off, or?
When are we thinking about having the meeting?
Oh, the workshop?
For the workshop, yeah.
Well, I think it's realistically, I think it's gonna be in late October and November.
My only thoughts are, I don't know, it just seems sometimes redundant between applicant and staff presentations, I don't know how to better streamline that, but, and really who should go first. Because sometimes I'd like to hear from the staff to see what the concerns are, so that way I kinda know the concerns while I'm listening to the presentation from the applicant, so I guess that's my only thoughts on it.
Okay, okay. Greg?
I agree with Mike, I mean, Monday we sat through a, through a presentation when there was only one item they were disagreeing about.
One of two presentations.
Yeah.
One of two.
Yeah, and it just, it just seems like it's a, it just seems redundant, like Mike's saying, and I'd like to see that streamlined a little bit better, so we just, you know, we all know that staff is gonna work with the applicant as much as possible, but if there is a disagreement, we just wanna really hear that, is the disagreement and why the disagreement is there, and how, what kind of resolution we can come out of that one. Because if they're doing their due diligence, then, then it wouldn't be coming before us. So, I just like to see that. And again, some of the other things, I reserve the right to talk about during the meeting, but like the architectural review, I know I've been on both sides of it. Zoning board says one thing, and then city council says another. You know, that, that's kinda frustrating to an applicant, is when you got, you know, zoning board saying, "Hey, this law looks good," then it comes before city council, and we're like, "Yeah, it doesn't look that good." So, trying to be in on the same page would be nice too, every once in a while. Other than that, for right now, that's all I can think of, like, you know, on the top of my head, just thinking about it, but I, like I said, I reserved the right to, during the workshop, to bring up other things that may come up.
Right, great, thanks, Greg. Amy?
I just look at this from a different tact, because I was one of the, I had this early on my suggestions for the staff to present to us, and that is that I really think we could all use in education, not only the council, but other committees within the, our city, to understand how this community development process works. Like, for example, I, we had a comment about Gopher Tortoise Preserve, and this is like a little item that comes out of community development, and I know that we mitigate for that. This is the first time that I was informed that we are supposed to be developing a Gopher Tortoise Preserve, so one of my questions, I'm very specific-oriented, I'm not kind of in general, was, you know, we should better understand the mitigation process, not only for these environmental issues, for coastal high-hazard zones, for traffic, and how it works its way through the system and how it affects the entire city. We look at it in a microcosm of individual events or applications, and we don't really, can't appreciate how, the far-reaching implications of that. And the same thing for bonus density, you know, we, we have this, this feature that we can provide bonus density, but we don't know how it affects the overall density of the area and the city. And similarly, you know, I'd like to know if, you know, you know, the process and the tools by which we can specifically implement the vision that we see for our city, and I don't think that's clear from looking at the applications on a one-by-one basis. One thing that's always bothered me is how we, what looks to me like double counting, when we have intensity, if we have a mixed-use development, you have commercial density awarded in certain sections of an acreage, and then residential in another one, and they are looked at individually and combined, that creates, you know, a pretty high-intensity density in there. So, there's all these kinds of specific things, which I don't think is clear, either in the process or how we should view it. So, rather, and I don't, other than that, and I do agree with the things that Councilman Forbes said had on his green sheet list, and one of the most important things I would like to see is, I like to know the negatives of an application that comes before, what is wrong with this application in the sense of what potential tensions should create in communities, rather than come say, you know, make this presentation that all the good things, you know? Because I do think that the way the staff works on this, and it's not to criticize them, is that they, they, their job is to try to move the application along and try to get it to a point where it is acceptable to the, to the city and to the applicant. But I do, I am concerned that the staff is making decisions along the way. We are delegating authority to them in certain ways in, in adjusting those applications before they come here. Maybe that's the proper way to do it, and maybe it's not, but I'd like to know what those decisions are along the way, because it's really our responsibility in the long time, what iterations they've been through. And the application that we heard on Monday was a very good example of how, I think the staff told us the iterations they went through. They showed us where we started, they went through the iteration, so we understood the evolution, so when, that was brought to us, we were comfortable that they came to a good spot to achieve something that we thought was important for that area in there. That was a very good application, was one of the first that I could look at and say that I was perfectly satisfied with and that I felt comfortable voting for with full knowledge. So, that, in the workshop, I think we need to talk about it, I have thirteen items I don't think we have to talk about here. I'll send them in an email, but I think the process itself is almost more important than what these, understanding how we do these things and what it means in the broader context. So, I look forward to the, to the workshop, and thanks for organizing it.
Thank you, and I guess I would echo everything that's been said here, and just, Amy said it, but I will just say it. Obviously, a recent example of a gentleman that I ran into that was told by staff, you know, "This is not the direction the city's going, we don't want your type of business in this part of the city, we want you over behind the dog track." I don't have to hear that more than once to realize there needs to be a change in the process, so I'll just leave it at that, rather than rehash that, but I agree with everything that's been said. I think it's a good process, but I think there is absolutely room for improvement, and like you said, Amy, at the end of the day, if somebody's unhappy, a business owner's unhappy, A, they shouldn't be, if it's gone through the process and has come before us for a vote, but B, we certainly don't wanna hear about it secondhand and hear that, "No, staff didn't do this," or "Staff didn't do that," and that's not to be harsh, because if it comes before us and we make a decision that they disagree with, that's, that's where it should be. It shouldn't be kinda secondhand conversations, so to speak, so. I, thanks for bringing this forward, Fred, that's all I would say, you wanna?
Yeah, I was gonna cap it off by saying that we'll be coming back to you, my phone is vibrating, so, put it on paper. So, that we'll also be giving you things to look at, like decision trees, and that, I think especially Amy will like that, because she's process-oriented, but it'll give you, like if we were, get into this design review, there's a whole series of forks in a row that you go down, and so that's called a decision tree. So, we'll kinda diagram that out, so you can be up on your thoughts on that. You'll be hearing from us again, probably before every meeting, and there'll be a green sheet with a question. Hopefully, it won't take this long. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Fred. Audrey?
I have nothing on your comments, sir.
Okay.
I don't know if Mr. Theriak has any comments on this. You don't need to be transcribing this. Okay.
I have nothing to add, other than I look forward to receiving your concerns, so we can tailor the presentation to address the issues that you would like to explore.
Great, thank you. Next.
Thank you. The next is, there was a request of a petition filed by Neil Montgomery on BG Mine for contraction of real property from the city of Benita Springs. Miss Montgomery had a witness that was unavailable to be here today, so we are continuing this till September 20th.
Okay.
If I can have a motion to that effect?
Okay, a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Leo Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is to provide us policy direction whether to utilize the Lee County Hearing Examiner's Office for the Pelican Landing CPD/RPD Amendment, case number PD-1523946BOS. And if you do provide it, I can provide in interlocal, assuming Lee County will consent to such use. You have the backup here, the green sheet, as well as correspondence between Ms. Sandridge and I. I believe she's in the audience today, so if you wish to hear from her, you're welcome to do so. Counsel, I believe this is your call. We have Mr. Theriaque here if you have any questions from him.
Counsel? Amy and then Fred.
I just want to mention that we've gotten, I stopped counting after about 125 emails from, I think mostly from...
North of 200, I think, Amy, but anyway.
Yeah. Well, mine didn't have, it used to count, but it didn't count.
Maybe I got extras.
Oh, good, no, but anyway.
From those other districts.
No, no, I don't think so.
Some district lists, right.
And I would request that you place them in as ex parte communication in that particular zoning file.
Right, I have it on the server, so it's already there.
Right.
I put them all together, so I can just refer to them, and Debbie can help me to distribute them. But basically, I don't think I got one that was opposite to this. They want, they emphasized home rule and wanting the decision to be, remain with the Benita Springs Council, which is a position that I feel also, because I think it's really important that we make these decisions within our city, because we have to live with them. So I will vote not to move it to the, and propose that we don't move it to the Lee County Examiner.
Great, thank you, Amy. Fred?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion and then I want to make a comment right after it's seconded. I make a motion that we do not give up home rule on this item. We are going to be in charge of the zoning, anything pertaining to this stays at zoning Board and City Council or LPA as appropriate.
Right.
And Audrey, I've reserved the right for Audrey to tweak my motion a bit, and then if I can get a second, I want to say one thing real quickly.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, further discussion.
All right, first, only thing I'm going to say is, this is important. There's an old saying, loose lips sink ships. Vote on this, you don't want to be talking too much.
And quite frankly, one other thing I need to point out to counsel, and that is, when we moved it up on the agenda, Ms. Sandridge was aware that prior to the city attorney's portion, there would be opportunity to speak, so I would ask that you provide her opportunity to speak at this time. Ms. Sandridge? And anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Hallie Sandridge and I represent WCI Communities. Thank you for hearing us today. We reaffirm our objection to the city entertaining this as a policy discretionary issue. I sent two letters to Ms. Vance outlining our position, one dated July 17th and the second is August 2nd. And we did hear the public comments today about trying to keep this a local issue. The problem is of the city's own making when it rejected our comp plan amendment. By rejecting our comp plan amendment, section 171.062 of the Florida statutes, which this city council is required to follow, says that the zoning regulations that apply to our current rezoning are those of Lee County. And that includes the process for the hearing examiner. And therefore, this city council has no choice in the matter. Having rejected our comp plan amendment, this falls under Lee County's jurisdiction. So we are here to place our objection to any policymaking decision and anything happening other than the city council following the law and sending this on to the Lee County Hearing Examiner. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mike, did you have anything to add? No?
I have public comment, I'll speak.
Greg?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate kind of what Amy and Fred both have said. Every year we go, or the last year that we've been on council, our biggest fight in Tallahassee has always been keeping home rule. So I wholeheartedly agree it needs to stay here, stay here home rule. That's what we're all about, that's why we became a city, that's why we're doing what we do.
Right, Amy, anything else to add?
No, but I expect we're going to hear from our special counsel at some point.
Right, 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 and I will just echo, home rule, home rule, home rule. Martha?
Well, since you opened up to public comment, as a recipient of a Home Rule Hero Award from the Florida League of Cities, I absolutely encourage you, and you had people from two communities come here, this is, I'm not going to talk about the merits of the case there, but this is obviously something that you've got very important ramifications for both of our communities, and I think that you keep it local. That's why we became cities, that's why Astero became a city, that's why Benita became a city. You want to take it to the county? You should have done that before you were in a city.
Rick Steinmeier, Lee County has a whole lot more money to gain from this project than the city of Benita Springs will. I'm afraid that Lee County would love to have more income from these towers, so if we can handle it in the city of Benita Springs, I hope we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Hello again.
Hey, guys. I didn't want to speak, this came up, but being a long time involved in the area down there, I have learned throughout the years that it's not about the tower so much as the beach access. More towers, more shuttles going across the bay to the beach. People in the towers will not enjoy the Astero Bay, the fish, the local waterways, and the history we have in there. So please do the best you can. I know your hands are tied, but remember, if it's in our jurisdiction, we share the assets of the nature, if you know what I'm getting at. It's about more towers, more shuttles going over to the beach, less beach for us locals, and they just go right by Astero Bay. They don't pay attention to the waterways, they don't pay attention to Mount Key. So you know, that's why I fight for the marina, so we can get that usage out there for the public. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Other members of the public? Thanks for raising your hand, that's good, that made it easy to see you.
Thank you. My name is Jack Lenny, I'm a resident living in the Astero portion of Pelican Landing. I personally was involved in the annexation of Bates four years ago when Benita began efforts to add northern properties to the city. It was not this board, it was another board, but the board actually annexed 130 acres of conservation land, Pelican Landing, they annexed Coconut Point Marina, quickly followed by the Hyatt, Raptor Bay, and Weeks Fish Camp. All of these annexations were documented by green sheets from the city and approved by the city council. However, the annexation of the Astero Port, Pelican Landing, the colony, 1,000 homes, required a mail-in ballot referendum, has failed. Hence, I live in Astero, not Benita Springs. These actions, as many of you know, accelerated Astero's efforts of leadership to change Astero from the unincorporated part of Benita Springs, of Lee County, to a city. And primarily to prevent further incursion by the city from the southern border. So when the rezoning for Raptor Bay to allow the residential towers to be built occurred last year, it's more of a circus than a meeting, I mean, there were people, buses, et cetera. The zoning and this city council were the deciding parties. The council voted against the proposal. Now we've heard the developer wants to return the jurisdiction of the property to Lee County, where the original zoning activities were executed years ago, and my question is, will they have to de-annex the property from Benita Springs? And if they do, I suppose it's possible, where would they go? Would they go to Astero? Not likely, because I think Astero feels stronger than Benita Springs does about this. Lee County, it'd be part of an enclave, and Lee County's surrounded by village and city. So I'd recommend to this council, the developer can't have it both ways. Benita Springs and WCI agreed that these annexations would be advantage, advantageous to both parties. Both parties should live up to their agreements. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay. Sir? Oh, he's just standing, okay. Okay, there's been a motion and a second, further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Time out, I'm sorry. Audrey, David, did you?
Would David say?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, David Theriaque. I'll just briefly state that I believe WCI's attorney misspoke. The property is not subject to Lee County's jurisdiction. What the chapter 171 states is that until the city assigns a future land use designation, until the city assigns a future land use map designation to the property, the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code of Lee County controls as it pertains to zoning and the comp plan provisions. What they're essentially saying is that the process that Lee County uses is binding on you. Well, if you take that to the logical conclusion, that process means that the county commission should be voting, because that's what it states in the code. That doesn't make any sense. You have the authority to decide this through the zoning board and through the city council using the substantive requirements of Lee County. You're not bound to use a hearing examiner, and you certainly aren't bound to let Lee County, Board of County Commissioners make this decision, which is what the same code that WCI's attorney is arguing from. So I would recommend that you vote to deny this request.
Thank you. Audrey, anything to add?
Yes, sir.
And I guess I would just, a yes vote is to vote in favor, a no vote is to deny. I just want to make that clear, right? It's not worded?
No, no.
Good thing I asked.
Deny.
Yeah.
Motion was to deny.
Motion to deny?
Since it's a motion to deny, which I believe was made by Councilman Forbes, then an aye would be to deny the request by Ms. Sandridge.
Glad I brought that up for myself, I guess.
But I confused those maybe, but okay.
I've been on an island before. Okay, further discussion, counsel? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Theriaque, thank you. Thank you, Audrey. Audrey, do you have anything else at this time, or?
Not at this time.
At the moment, okay. So we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations. If Matt Feeney could come forward, please.
Yeah, Matt. I thought they were clapping for you, Matt.
I know, buddy. Good to see you.
I know we have a lot of folks exiting, so thank you very much for being with us this morning. This is a certificate from the city of Benita Springs, of five years of service presented to Matt Feeney, Bishop Vareau graduate and Notre Dame graduate, I might add, as of the 20th day of August 2017, in appreciation and recognition for five years of public service to the city of Benita Springs, Florida, signed mayor, Peter Simmons and city manager Carl Schwing. I think that's what that stands, Carl? Matt, thank you very much.
I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity and thank you to the staff that works with me on a daily basis. Without them, I couldn't do it.
Thank you. And Matt, your military service as well, thank you very much, buddy, you're outstanding. Thank you.
Good to have you. Good job.
Thank you.
A great asset, that he can stick, stick for at least another five years.
And he's humble, too, you know? A humble bumble.
Now that we mixed everything up, I don't even know what we're doing here.
Okay, great, we're now going to move on to a presentation by Collier County on golf course redevelopment in Collier County. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development. A few meetings ago, council had asked staff to go ahead and do some research and find out what communities in southwest Florida are doing for best management practices on golf course conversion. I had the opportunity to hear Caroline Seelick from Collier County present at the Florida Planning, Zoning Association Conference. It's a professional planning organization on Collier County's efforts on golf course redevelopment, and we thought she would be a great asset to go ahead and explain to you what Collier County has been doing and their current regulations on golf course redevelopment. So without further ado, Caroline Seelick.
Great, thank you, Jacqueline. Good morning, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here today. My name is Caroline Seelick and I am the manager of the Building Plan Review and Inspection Division for Collier County's Growth Management Department. That's our recent position. Before that, I was the Land Development Code Manager for several years, and so I've spent the bulk of my professional career working on Land Development Code Amendments. And it's a pleasure to present to you what we have done recently in Collier County. What do you do when a golf course has outlived its usefulness? Perhaps they have experienced a decrease in players over the last couple of years? Perhaps they have experienced increased competition in the area? Or perhaps simply in the future, homeowners associations simply want to convert the land use? Because, as we all know, land use does change over time. This question, with its multitude of prompts, faced the Board of County Commissioners last spring. And over several meetings, the board discussed their considerations and concerns for golf course conversions in the county. And there were three main takeaways. And the first was, they were concerned with the loss of open space, because golf courses, there are plenty in Collier, they provide significant open space in our community. The second concern was that there would be a potential loss in property values for the homes that bordered the golf courses, because perhaps they would be going from a golf course with a lakeside view to a residential view. And the third consideration was that any conversion process should include the stakeholders, i.e. the neighboring communities. So following these discussions, the board implemented a moratorium and directed staff to pursue a Land Development Code Amendment that would specifically address golf course County staff prepared amendment following thorough and thoughtful research. We researched other municipalities across the state of Florida, as well as a few nationally. We checked out comprehensive plans, as well as looking at academic literature, and most importantly, we spoke with planners who had experienced conversion projects in their communities, and we spoke with planners who were preparing for conversion projects in their communities. And that, so the vast majority of the amendment that we prepared was based on the research that we found in looking at these communities' codes and in speaking with their planners. And what we found was that conversions are occurring. They're occurring across the nation, and there's quite a few occurring in Florida, particularly on the east coast. And there were ample, ample news articles to review to find out how those conversion projects occurred. And what we also saw were some reasons why. And it was due to a loss of players over time, and many of the conversion projects were due to loss of revenue, and that had been occurring over many years. What we also saw was that obtaining early input in the conversion process was particularly important for the project to ultimately reach consensus and for a board to approve it. When communities were caught off guard or completely surprised that there was a conversion project in their backyard, the process often became very lengthy, contiguous, and sometimes litigious, which is obviously not in the best interest of the community, of the applicant, and of the board making that decision. So, and you know, of all the areas that are experiencing golf course conversions, we found that they, those boards and those communities had very similar concerns to the concerns that our board shared with us. the concerns that our board shared with us. We implemented two significant changes with our conversion code standards. And this is the first one, which are stakeholder outreach meetings. We refer to them as SOMs, S-O-Ms for short. We like acronyms in our code. And here, what we're looking for is a very collaborative and transparent process where the applicant would be required to engage with stakeholders as these pictures describe. We are requiring that they hold two SOMs, SOMs, because what we're looking for is in the first one, for them to share with the community, i.e. those stakeholders that live around the golf course, what the developer is seeking to do, what their proposal looks like, and gain input and gain feedback. And then for that second meeting, we're asking for the developer and applicant to take a look and see what they can actually pull into their project and utilize from, and utilize the ideas that came from those stakeholders. And at the end of the two meetings, we are requesting or requiring that they provide a report, which would document what transpired at the meetings and what input was gathered and the feedback that was gathered from the applicant, or from the stakeholders, and what was able to be incorporated into the project proposal that the developer is looking to take forward. So the first significant code standard was the SOMs, and this is the second one. It's the greenway. And our greenway is defined as a 100-foot, basically buffer that borders the existing residential neighbors with the golf course. And we're here, we're trying to preserve an open space view, as well as provide some recreational uses that would be part of the new project. Open space uses here includes perhaps a retention of some of the golf course, simple open space, perhaps walking, multi-use paths, playgrounds, the like. And this, this standard really does address two of our board's main concerns, so we were happy that we were able to come up with this one. We do recognize that a 100-foot buffer may not be reasonable in every situation. In this scenario, we have applied the 100-foot buffer to a real golf course in Collier County, and it works here. But we realized it wouldn't work in every situation, so we also included some flexibility in our standards for an alternative greenway design. And here, the important thing is that the developer would vet it with those stakeholders at the SOM meetings, at those two meetings, and then the board would review it, analyze it, and if it was approved, the developer could move forward with that design.
God.
So I'd like to take a step back and talk about kind of the big picture framework for our amendment, because we did provide a step-by-step process for golf course conversions in our code. And the first one is a pre-application meeting, and speaking with your planning manager, the City of Benita Springs does have a voluntary pre-application meeting, and so it would be very similar to that scenario, but it would be required here, where the applicant comes forward and shares what they would like to do with staff. They walk through the process, and they answer any questions that, you know, they can't answer at that time. The next part would be for them to apply and submit an intent to convert application. So this is a very specific application designed just for golf course conversions. And it contains three main parts. The first one are alternatives. So we're asking the developer to walk through alternative scenarios for the golf course. The first one would be no conversion. And so we're asking them to reach out, let the HOA know, hey, this is available to be purchased or developed. Are you interested? Are you willing? Is it feasible? The second option, or second alternative, rather, is the purchase by the county. And they would reach out to the county, and that conversation would occur. And then the third option is their traditional development proposal, where they would identify what they were looking to build. The second part of the intent to convert application is preparing for those stakeholder outreach meetings. We do require that they identify how they're going to conduct that outreach. It's not really just a share, it's a back-and-forth conversation, so we've identified how we want that to occur. And then the third part of the application is that report. We need to know what transpired at the meetings. And that's very important, because that report travels with the application as it moves through the process, through the land use approval, next step. And number three would be that they can then take their materials and apply for a rezone or a PUD, or a planned unit development, rather, or a planned unit development amendment. So in conclusion, we believe that we've prepared an amendment that addresses the uniqueness of golf courses in Collier County, and that we provided a very robust program so that our decision-makers are very informed of what the developer and what the stakeholders are interested in seeing on that golf course, and that we addressed all of our board's main concerns and considerations. And this amendment was adopted by the board on March 28th of this year. We had a record turnout for any amendment. I've been doing this for about five years and had never seen that many people. We had over 300 people attend the meeting, all in support of the amendment, and the board adopted it unanimously on that day. So you can find our codified provisions on municipal code. We have a special section dedicated to our golf course standards. And we also have the process and submittal requirements identified in our administrative code for land development, which is available on the county's website. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Nice presentation. Counsel, questions? Amy?
I just have one last question, because this is something that is, I'm curious about, is when these original developments were first brought before the county and they were approved, they typically have balanced open space with density, and the one, and they tend to cluster the housing around the outskirts of the golf course. So when you convert it, in effect, you are increasing density in that area. Is that ever a consideration, like if you, if a future land use map doesn't allow that density, or do you ever get into that situation?
That's a fabulous question. And in Collier, we actually do have regular straight zoning golf courses, and we have where, what you described, which occurs in a planned unit development. And in our amendment, we did address that. So any other golf course that was identified as meeting the open space requirement needed to be resolved first. So most likely, they wouldn't be able to convert all of it if they did indeed use some of that open space to meet the open space requirements of the whole PUD. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you had, you had to do the open space test first before you proceed to it?
Exactly, and that is included in our
That's a very practical way.
Standards. And we also made sure that any preserves that were located on the golf, because, you know, sometimes they were around the edges, were also taken care of and would need to be retained.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Greg, anything?
No, I think it was a great, great presentation.
Mike?
Thank you.
Fred?
Very good presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Okay, we're now going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, take a look there at all of those. Anything you want to pull?
I'm pulling F.
F, okay. We're going to pull... I'm sorry, Fred, E?
Pull H.
E is an Eric, H is an Henry. Anything else? Motion to approve the rest? I'll make that motion in a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay, E.
If I could have Ann come up, she's going to just briefly make sure that everybody, including the public, understands the impact on the budget of this item.
Thank you. Good morning, Ann.
Good morning. Ann Wright, Finance Director. If council approves this green sheet regarding the addition of health and savings account amount that would be provided to council members who opt out of the health insurance benefit, it would add approximately $11,000 cost to the city council budget for FY '18. So upon your approval of the screen sheet, we would go ahead and add that to the budget.
I move to accept.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Duett?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay, thank you, Ann. F.
Yeah, I pulled F. It has to do with the budget, and during public comment, there was some comments about adding to the budget for, like, a line item to do a boardwalk at the Dog Park and the Gopher Tortoise Preserve. But, and then also the, for a transition period for this year for the River Fest, to do it as a, I think it was said a council project, just so we could offer some money for transition period. And, and then I guess possibly also maybe a line item to, for the Eagle Cam, if that's doable.
I can speak to Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director.
And I just want to add one more thing. I'll throw it out. Sorry, Nicole, because Martha and I have been in some meetings, and I did receive a phone call last night and a message this morning for a $2,000 request for a festival this fall, Martha. Yes, a request for, from Juan Romero, for a festival for this fall, which is moving forward, and that would be a $2,000 request. So I just want to throw everything out there, so, thanks.
Yeah, I can speak to the Eagle Cam and the Gopher Tortoise Preserve to give you additional updates. We have been working with Fish and Wildlife on additional information for the Eagle's Nest as of yesterday, because we were getting conflicting reports as to where exactly it's located. Fish and Wildlife had it located outside of city property. Others have said it's inside. We actually did a GPS coordinates yesterday, and we did find out that it is just barely inside and on city property. So that, we are making a new map. It is different from the one that Martha has, but it is slightly inside, literally by inches.
Who says district lines don't matter, right?
So we are working on a new map that will be distributed to Fish and Wildlife so they can update their information. So that is something where we wouldn't need private property permission. We would need permission from other different organizations, such as Fish and Wildlife, DEP, things like that, if you wanted to do any sort of Eagle Cam. The other thing we've been working on is we've contacted FPL for a cost of getting electricity to the park. To the park itself would be $12,000, and then back to where the Eagle's Nest would be could be up to another additional $6,000.
Well, I think it had been presented that there are solar-powered, you know, cams that you can just put up there, no wires whatsoever.
We're looking into all of those. Solar power's a little hard in that area, because it is completely covered area, so to reach from where it's open land for the solar panels, to reach all the way back to the nest, has become a little bit problematic, and we're doing some more research onto that to see how well that would work.
Well, I think it's all like a self-contained unit. I don't think it's a separate solar panel powering it. I think it's, you know, just a camera with the solar panels on it that you just mount in the tree.
Well, that's what we're, we're trying to do, all different ways of trying to figure it out. Comcast has reached out to us and doing the data, as Ms. Pagan said, because she had reached out to them. So they've already reached out to us, do know where the tree is as well now. So we are still gathering all of this information. It does take a little time, because we're working with all the different organizations to do it. So it would, it is something we're still working on, so everyone has an update. But I did want to let you know that it is, we do know for sure the exact GPS coordinates that it is on city property.
I, Nicole, I have continual concern about
Sure.
About just making it more accessible
Mm-hmm.
And more noticeable, you know? I, I don't know who would evaluate that kind of thing if it's Fish and Wildlife, but right now, it's sort of a hidden jewel.
Mm-hmm.
And it probably should be left that way for a while. So we need, in addition to facilitating access, which I think would be wonderful, I love webcams, and I worked on Bluebird webcams when I was in New York, so it just is great, but, but to have people be attracted to that area where we might lose them, I, I think it would be such a crime. So I think we need to do a little homework before we go down this path. I mean, that I have a real concern, so I would ask you to just explore that first before we start
Sure.
Doing all this other stuff. And, and don't disappoint the community if we feel that it's best for the, for the eagles to keep them protected, because that's a way of protecting them. I mean, the first thing I want to do is go down there, and I haven't, I restrained myself to take a look at it, because I've never seen that, you know?
From, from the River Park property, it is difficult to see. It is easier to see on the private property. Most people actually stop along the roadway to see, because it is, the, the way it's located in that south corner of the private property, that, their property is open, so it's easier to see the nest from that site. On our end, we are, the trails, we did a temporary shutdown of the trails. A permanent solution is actually coming this week. It will be eight-foot barrier bushes, shrubs, to block all of those trails, and then we will have signage. From Fish and Wildlife's standpoint, they allow cams, they will allow the Eagle Cam. It's just a permitting process to do. But it really would be up to city council to decide if that's something you want to do or not, because it is permitted through them.
Mm-hmm. And they don't give you any advice about how to make sure they're not spooked or whatever happens?
No, they just issue the permit, and then it's council's decision as to
Well, I'm not a naturalist, but I still, I have, I have a real concern about that, you know?
Yeah, we can buffer on our end and on our property, and it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty buffered on our end. The issue is going to be from the private property side on, on buffering, because I can't buffer from that side, since it is private.
Do we have any relationship with the private property owners, or they could cooperate, or we attempted to do that to try to?
We could certainly reach out and try.
And there is another, at least one Eagle's Nest that's up in the annexed property, because we see it from our golf course all the time. So there might be an alternative that might be more
We can look into that one as well.
Yeah, there's another one. I don't know exactly where it is. I can't figure out if it's in Pelican Landing or at Raptor Bay.
We will, we'll do some research and look into that.
Great, thank you. Counsel, yeah, Mike?
Well, and then, so they, like, boardwalk through the Gopher, Gopher Tortoise Preserve?
The Gopher Tortoise Preserve, we do, we, at the Dog Park, we have not designated it as a Gopher Tortoise Preserve. We do have lots of gopher tortoises there. In order to do that, we would need to do some pretty extensive exotic removal in the area. So that would be the first step that we would need to go through. We did, in the past, when we were looking at developing the Dog Park, we got some different cost on that, and they were between $20,000 and $30,000 for exotic removal, because that is a very large piece of property. That half of the property is the same size as the entire other half of the Dog Park. So, because there is some old pads from it being a former mobile home park, there are some other things in there that we would have to dig out, and then we could put the boardwalks through.
Don't we have to do the exotic removal anyway?
It's not mandated that we, because we have exotics in all of our parks, and we try to do them as best we can, but it's not mandated that we have to do it in every, but we try. I mean, we should. We do the best we can at trying to, but that would be thousands and thousands of dollars a year.
I just have a question about the process again. I'm sorry, I'm a process person, but do we have any money in the mitigation fund for Gopher, I mean, is there a fund?
That would not, that would be a...
There's the upland issue.
I mean, when we do mitigation, do we set, do we line item each individual thing? Or we just put it all in a mitigation fund? How do we do that? If there's a zoning condition where there's upland, and I wish we had Mr. Kirby here, because he could probably explain it best, we do sometimes have a fee in lieu if they're not going to preserve onsite. The best, of course, is to preserve onsite, because you never want to congregate gopher tortoises, because that's where they start getting the respiratory infection. But we have a fee in lieu that we accept sometimes, and we did accept some upland, and I don't know if there were gopher tortoises, if they weren't on that particular site. Well, my question is...
Your question's a budget question, right?
Well, no, it's sort of like, what are we doing if we're going to mitigate?
We take money from people sometimes.
And then, do we, should we do something with that, or just take the money? I mean, I mean, how do we translate?
Details, details, Amy. Great, no, great point, absolutely.
No, this is the point. I mean, are, is there some plan to do the, do something with that fund? Is this an appropriate place to put it? Or should we just?
Well, I believe that Community Development just said it wasn't designated for that.
It was, or was not?
Was not, correct? No, it was not.
Okay, Ann, did you have something you want to say?
Yes, yes. We, we have not received any funding for that. Okay, so there is no money for this, for gopher tortoises. Okay, so there is no money for this, for gopher tortoises, but in, in the future, if we get it, we should have some plan in place to what we're doing it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Well, or, or if we could just do it as a line item, put some money in and get started on it, you know, start with the exotic removal, and, you know, just be working towards that.
Yeah, we can go as we...
And, and then, and then I guess finally, the, the River Fest question.
Good morning, Laura Taylor, Director of Communications. We have been in talks with John Pano, he's sent some emails asking for assistance, just to find out information about contacts and what we've done in the past. I've offered him full assistance to help with any transition, but it would be up to council whether or not they would add funding temporarily back in this year for transition.
What have we spent previously in the past on, though?
Uh, I don't have all of my numbers in front of me, but around $9,000 for the event, and in talking with him, he did ask me a cost for advertising and performers, and I would say that would be about $3,000.
So we've spent like 12 in the past, then?
We've budgeted 12. Last year, we, we spent a little less than that.
So, ma, maybe we could do, do like 5,000 this year, like as a transition thing?
He had requested 3,000.
Oh, honey?
Right? Unless...
The last time I spoke with him, which was last week, was a request talking about advertising and performers.
So how's this for fiscal conservatives? Mike, we'll take your five, we'll, River Fest three and two for the other request, and we're still at five. Get two events for the price of one, how's that?
Did he say three? No, wait a minute, did he say three or five? What are we doing here?
He said three.
When he spoke with me, he was at three.
So why don't we just do three?
Okay.
All right. Because this is supposed to give them, it, it's kind of hard because they were planning on getting funding, is this the whole idea about transition, and then to get them going, and then going forward?
It is.
Yes, Martha, as the founder of this event?
I want to thank Laura for working with John. Okay, I mentioned this briefly, but the cost of some of the things like the policing, dumpster, you know, all this kind of stuff, when, when I was here and we did that, we didn't have all those costs because it was a council thing, and so, I don't, Audrey might be able to speak to how you do this, or Ian, or whatever. So the reason I was asking to make it a District Five council project, right, because maybe the city can absorb some of those things. I talked to John yesterday, and we looked, because he'd asked about advertising, which is about $2,000, I think, that Laura spent for that. We were talking about six yesterday, so, in the other festival you were talking about, the Sheriff's Department came back to us and quoted us $2,300 for the sheriffs. This makes having a community event almost impossible, a grassroots community event, when it's $2,300, and you just want to have a small affair, you don't want to have a big deal, you know? So it makes choices difficult in how you're going to present that. So anyhow, I didn't, wasn't aware that Juan was going to ask that, and I'm grateful. His partner, who are Vento Hispanos, has dropped out and said, because he want, he thought he was going to make $25,000 off of this, I was like, no, that's not going to happen. We're presenting a community festival for the community, not for your pocket. So, that's where that thing went off the rails. So anyhow, about River Fest, District Five, council project, if you can't make it six, five would be really helpful. We have people, we're reaching out to paddling outfitters, fishing outfitters, because you're going to the convention next month, and other people in the community, Jimmy Weeks with the mullet, you know, so we are looking at continuing, and we're cutting out some of the things that we don't think follow the focus of focusing on the river, like petting zoo and pumpkin patches and things like that, to bring it back to the river focus. So it'll be a much simpler, probably smaller event, but continuing in the tradition of the history of the river, the focus on the conservation, the water, getting the water right, that kind of thing. So, thank you guys. And, and exotic removal is like the number one thing. Back in that October 2003, when the Gopher Tortoise Preserve was mentioned, Councilman Piper, District Five, said, you know, one of the main things that we need to do on this property is clear exotics, because those gopher tortoises need wild grasses and wild flowers and things, they need sunlight for those to be produced, so that those tortoises can eat. So that would be, I think, the first step, and then get infrastructure, do your basics, then get some infrastructure. Thank you very much, folks.
So Laura, what, what triggers needing the, the CP detail?
This year, we have dealt with this ourselves, we, we work with our sheriff's office very closely, Councilman Dewitt has been involved with this as well for the Fourth of July and the parade. The new captain has taken a look at some of the protocols for our events, and was concerned with some of the, the road closures and, and the way we were closing the road. So the, the request came from the sheriff's office to put in place MOT plans, maintenance of traffic plans. With that comes additional costs. We have always had events that are coming to the city that are permitted by the city go through the sheriff's office for details. They do that outs, out of their, their main district or south, actually, Brian, Brian, what district is that? I'm sorry?
Details?
The details, that's the...
Headquarters?
Headquarters, outside of headquarters, that's outside of the CP units, over responsibility there. So the details can cost $65, I believe, per hour, and there is a sign-off sheet in our special event permit packet that the sheriff's office has jurisdiction over, that, that is a safety issue, and they will recommend how many details the event organizers need to have to close a road. The city, if it comes to maintenance of traffic plan, the city had to also put that into effect for our Fourth of July event and our Celebrate Benita. The fire department this year had to put a maintenance of traffic plan into effect for their Fourth of July parade.
Okay, great. Well, I, I don't think we're talking about road closure, but if they needed somebody to help with crossing or just directing traffic, whenever there's construction, you know, they're not using generally the police to do it, they have people that, flagmen that can direct traffic, hold back traffic. Would that be a more economical way of doing it? Does it have to be done through the sheriff's department, or?
To our knowledge, it does have to be done through the sheriff's department. The sign-off sheet does go through the sheriff's office department, and then they would assign how many deputies are needed for the event, whether it be security or traffic. They do try to work with our applicants as much as possible, but that isn't something that our CP units are doing. What our CP does under our community contract is they offer assistance for the city events. So for Fourth of July, we will get the deputies that are on our CP unit, they will come and they will work our event without an additional cost. They will do that for Celebrate Benita, you know, the holiday event, they do that, a couple of our, our events, they, they come out for us with no additional charge. The maintenance of traffic plan is, is in addition to it, though.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, Carl, please.
And of course, we've got Brian sitting back there who could, you know, answer these questions in a great way, but, you know, my experience has been based upon events that Rotary has held, is that the number of deputies that are assigned by headquarters out of the sheriff's office is a function of the number of attendees that are expected, number one, whether or not alcohol is going to be served onsite, and then traffic concerns, and those are the ones that I've experienced, and Brian, am I pretty good there?
Counsel's pleasure, if Brian should come up. Uh, yes, please. Prez, come on up, buddy.
And with, with security that's required for events, they're allowed to get outside private security too, right? They don't have to contract with the, but that wouldn't apply to traffic, though?
The special event application is reviewed by the sheriff's office for every event that happens in our city. They could contract with an outside security company to come in, but they would still be reviewed by the sheriff's office, and the sheriff's office would determine if they were, would be required to have any details for their event.
Hey, Prez, anything to add, or Mike, anything specific to ask?
I, I, oh, I'm sorry.
Amy? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I thought you were, you were, you were going to say...
No, I'm going to touch on what Carl said, basically, I can't comment on what gets done with the details. Like Laura said, there's, there's events that are contracted into the contract that we assist with and help with, but due to the MOT and that issue, it's going to be up to the detail coordinator, who's, I just can't comment on what they do on, outside of their events.
I, I was just going to comment that I prefer to have community policing be our moderators or our...
Well, and that's...
Because you know the community, you know the people, you're used to dealing with us, and so whatever is for the health and safety of our citizens, I think should be first. And if it costs us some money, I'd rather err on the side of being a little more expensive than trying to save a few dollars here or there. That's my position. So I don't think that's a good use of saving dollars here.
Well, when the details are offered for these events, they are offered to the Benita Springs Community Policing Officers first.
Right.
We, we kind of worked that out with them because of the council and the few, the past council wanting the deputies that are there. Obviously, we're working someone, it's not against the guy who works in Norfolk Myers or Lehigh, we'd rather have somebody who's familiar with the people and the area down here to come down, or not just stand there at a post and not, when somebody comes up and goes, hey, where's old 41 in Wilson, and they're like...
Correct. Yeah.
Fred, did you have something?
Yeah, well, on two or three things. Number one, on the police or the, the private rent-a-cops are good for some things, but we need people that, if there's trouble, they're armed, they can take care of it. The rent-a-cops, generally speaking, they're nothing more than somebody in a uniform. And I, I agree with Amy, we need to do what's best for the public protection.
Some of, some of that private security you guys are talking about has been used in the past, like the, the watchover is certain exhibits or property in the middle of the night, which is not, I don't know if they're armed or not, I don't believe they are most of the time, but we, being with Laura, Laura's given us, and when Arlene was there, would give us a heads up that stuff is in the park, and I'd let my guys and gals know that that stuff was there to keep an eye on it also during their daily functions.
I, I think, I think having them there creates problems from occurring just by their presence, I think. Secondly, I think on these two items of these events for District Five, I think that I would, I would suggest go with five for the transitional thing and put in three for the other thing. And that's a little more than both have asked for, but I think we want to see these things get started off right, and, and that, and it is going to, a couple of extra grand is going to break our city. And on, on the park, I think that we have an incumbent duty to remove exotics from property that the city owns, because we, we kind of expect residents, HOAs and all that to do it, so why wouldn't we have to remove it? And I'd like to see the, the gopher tortoise become a park, so we ought to be moving with a plan that can come back to council for that. But I would like to put it three or $4,000 to get planning done on that, on what can be done in there, so we have a placeholder, we may not even spend it, but it's a, a placeholder or a debt fund.
Oh, sorry, Prez, about that.
Are you guys good?
I think so, any more questions of Prez?
Well, I...
Not a Prez.
I do have a comment.
The Prez, how about that Prez?
I think we should try to be prudent in, in our add-ons that we have, because we've already gone through a very laborious process to try to get expenditures back to the 2000, fiscal year 2016 levels, which we haven't quite matched already. So, and I know it seems like it's a little, not a, a big add-on, but these little add-ons, we do it, it's so easy to add, it's so hard to take away, and we have depended on the event organizers to give us a number, so let's just go with it. They've already looked at this, we don't know what they need or don't need, so we've already applied it, so I would not be in favor of adding any more on. And again, I have to come back to process, because I don't understand what we're doing with these events. I thought we were going to look at them in total, we were going to have some kind of a number, and that we were going to go through a process of how we were going to allocate, so I don't know what this new thing that, uh, uh, may, the mayor has proposed, is that...
I'm not proposing it, I'm bringing it forward.
Well, you're bringing it forward, is that...
A walk-on, an add-on.
Is that a different?
Yes, it is.
This is an additional one, we already have one in the budget, right? So this is another one, so I, I, I mean, I do think if we're going to go through this, and if we, if we don't want to subscribe to, to the idea of having a total figure that we distribute through some kind of a, an appropriate process, then let's not have that process, but if we have that process, I believe we should follow it. And if we want to add the, the suggestion that just came in today in that whole thing, and we go, and we put it in with the process with the other things, that's fine with me, because I don't know which event should get help, financial help, and which shouldn't, because we haven't analyzed that, so I'm against going against that process that I thought we agreed to. If we didn't agree to it, let's change the process.
No, I, I would echo Amy, your thoughts, there is a process, or we're working towards a process, and there was a process. These two additional requests came after that process and that request, and not to point out the obvious, we are in budget season. Budget season is not over until September, so we may get more moving forward. Mike, do you have anything to add?
Um, so with the, the contract for the CP that helps with the city events, if this was a council project, would that be covered under it, or does the contract specifically spell out Celebrate Benita, Fourth of July?
It is current, River Fest is currently one of the events that the deputies do help out with, but that would be, I would say, a council's decision as to if, if you're going to take that on, because at some point, is it still a city event, or is it transitioning? And then you would have to look at, what do you want to help with during that transition? If the answer is, we want to treat this as a city event during the transition with funding, or deputies are working as, as a city event, at least for the first year, to get them started, but they would be responsible for all the planning, organizing, we could do that. But that would be up to council, what council's decision would be.
I, I think that's a good...
No, I...
Greg?
Laura? I'm sorry.
Arlene.
Arlene.
Sorry. What, how this could possibly be handled is within the green sheet for the approval of special event, the city could co-sponsor it under the direction of District Five, and you could spell out what that co-sponsorship includes, which could include coordinating with the, with Lee Caddy Sheriff's Office Community Policing Unit to support this event for this year. And that's how we handled it when we first started the program, it was a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and Lee County Parks and Recreation, and it was a co-sponsored event, and we laid out what that co-sponsorship was, those particular items identified as approval by city council. I did also want to add a little bit in regard to the comments about the MOT. I did attend the FCCMA conference, and one of the sessions I attended, which I shared that information with Laura, is that security is a top one priority of events in all our communities, state, not only the state of Florida in reference to things that happened in Orlando, but basically also in the fact of what things happened with the Boston Marathon. What was looked at previously as community gatherings and fun, wonderful social times, which we want them to be, and we want our residents to feel that way, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes action that needs to occur so that safety and security is kept. So those are national trends, and not, not just happening in Lee Springs, we're getting to that point now. Obviously, we have a beautiful downtown that's been renovated, lots of crosswalks and opportunities are much better for safety and security, but there are still many behind-the-scenes things that have to be addressed for safety, security, and liability, and so we're probably going to see more of these trends happening, but we continue our partnership and our great support from the sheriff's office.
Thank you, Arlene, very well said. Laura, anything to add to that?
Just to note that while these things are being put in place, there are costs associated with them. So we have to be realistic in the fact that if, if we are asking for additional things from our sheriff's office, there will be costs associated unless you are looking at it in, in light of their contract, and you're asking for them to include more in their contract at the time of negotiation, that's all.
Right, right, very good point, okay. Counsel?
I just had, I mean...
Greg?
I, I kind of agree with, with Mike on this, and the transition, I think we should give them something for the transition instead of, you know, cutting them off at the knees the first year. They should have, we should have been talking about this in the last couple of years and telling them this is what our intentions are. So I, I would agree with Mike to give them, you know, three or $5,000, whether it becomes like Arlene says, a partnership or not. If it's, if we're going to pay the sheriff's office, it's got to come from somewhere, so we need to budget it now. I do agree with Amy also about with this new event, which is the one that you kind of helped kick off, Mayor Festiva. You guys did that the first year, River Fest did it on their own for the first couple of years. This new event, I think, should be done a year or two to see if it's going to be a ongoing event, then come back and ask for city support or city dollars to do that. It's, it's, because I just don't want to get in a habit, if someone comes and gives one of the seven offices a call and says, hey, can you help us out with that event? I mean, what, what's next? I mean, is the local firefighters union going to say, hey, can you chip in some money for the Fourth of July parade? Is the next one coming, you know, the Rotary coming and saying, hey, can you help out with Celebrate Beni, or with, with Taste of the Town or something like that, giving big, hard dollars, not just waive the fees, wanting hard dollars to do that? So I, I think those events should stand on their own before they come to become a city event.
Or have a application... Or have a application review process for the Fourth of July Parade, right? Or any of those fun things.
Exactly.
Okay, great. Amy, did you have something to add?
No, I just want to clarify, because, um, is community policing already scheduled, I mean, for the Riverfest? Or would that be an add-on?
Yes, they, in the past...
In the current contract, it's on the, it's on the list?
They have always assisted since it's become a city event with, and, and maybe before that I don't know of, but they have always assisted by supplying deputies to that event.
All right. But, and, but that hasn't been a cost item for the event, Laura?
No.
Okay. So, so we don't have to be concerned about this for this year. For next year, if we want to continue it, we have to decide whether we want them to be included in the list.
And it could be a discussion that we have with the Sheriff's Office.
Correct. All right.
By the way, Mayor and Counsel, you still have the CP contract coming to you that will begin October first. So, that's, we're waiting, because we want to make sure we understand what the county commission's gonna do with the Sheriff's request for increasing it. So, that contract's still coming to you. Okay, great. Thanks. Counsel, anything further?
Do we need to...
Need direction.
I need a motion.
I guess a, an all-inclusive motion on the three things together, or take them separately, or...
I think we should...
Probably separately, don't you think?
Well, I, I like a discussion of whether we should have an overall writing process here or we should just look at these things on an individual basis. I thought we were gonna look at it sort of in an overriding way. So, are we gonna change our mind?
Laura? I'm sorry. To, to process?
To process, event process. Currently, you see, you will have an errata that was sent out asking for us to temporarily, temporarily hold applications for any time after January first. What that would do would allow us time to go through the process with you and make any necessary updates. We would continue to hold their event date and ensure that they have the date if it's after January first. We would continue to process any event applications that come in prior to January first under the current ordinance. We have done quite a bit of research. We have about twelve cities that we started with, and now we've narrowed it down to five cities that are comparable to ours in population. We have looked at gated communities, because that was brought up by council as one of the concerns. We've looked at the fee structure and, and how that might need to be updated. We have looked at the process of the permits. Do we want to go yearly? Do we want to go out five years? So, all of that has been researched currently. We're asking for a temporary hold, and then we'll be bringing the entire presentation to you at the next meeting.
And, and that's pertaining to anything after the first of the year, but the, Riverfest is coming up this October. So, I mean, that's, that's why it's kind of...
But that would be processed according to your new plan, because it's before December, so... I'm in favor of doing something for Riverfest. It's the, any other things that might come forward, I think we should put it on the list to be considered against the other events that might be there, you know, in total. I, I'm in favor of a total figure that goes into events and then figuring out how to distribute it through some kind of a process.
Okay. I think, are we talking...
Greg?
Just to clarify in my own head, I think, Amy, you're, are we talking about two other things? You're referring more so to the budget side of it than the application of what events are coming to the park. You're talking about the app, you're, you're more so referring to the budget process.
But it's also, but, it's also budget, because when these applicants come before us, they ask us for things, just like this. And we, how do you say, "Let's give, you know, two thousand for this for advertising and two thousand for this", or whatever they come before? And how do you evaluate that? Just because we have a preference for one event over another, I think they all, you know, we, we have to have some cohesive process by which we could analyze.
Well, I think to the mayor's, to what the mayor said, this is budget season. That's why everybody's doing that. You know, if the budget sets come, if the budget is set come October one, and someone comes into us April and asks for budget dollars, we don't have it. We didn't budget it unless we decided to take it out of reserves or take it out of a contingency fund. They're just not there. So, let's use Mr. Romero, who comes, let's say he would have came to the mayor December one and asked for this. The mayor's comment would have been or could have been, "We didn't budget it. It's not in the budget. Sorry." Or, "Let us talk to council and we'll take it out of contingency or reserves." And then we'd go to the process.
But we do, we do have a budget. We have, what, two hundred and fifteen?
Yeah, but they're lined out, but they're lined out for individual processes.
Let me just, if you don't mind, really quickly...
And that is a number that is a work in motion until we pass our final budget in September.
And we do have, the Special Events Committee does currently plan all of your city's special events. What we're going through at this point is some transition. We took a look at the budget. We looked at some areas for reduction. We have some eager community partners that are stepping up, ready to take those events on, and it's a part of the process of change. So, they're coming in and now asking for some funding to help with that transition. Um, so, I think you would see that regardless of, of anything when you're doing this type of process, because there is some change.
Right. And, and let's not get rattled. We're gonna have other requests before September. Just because we had that wonderful workshop that we had in meeting a few weeks back, we're gonna have more requests. It's budget season. It, it's just the nature of the beast, so to speak. Fred, did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, one thing, I think the one thing we have to keep in mind, we literally lost a month or more because we waited to tell the staff they had to make these cuts. They, they, they worked on this for a month. They printed a budget. They were told, "Go back and go back to this other thing", which I think is good. But we, we would be pound foolish to realize, not realize, that there will be different times that we will be dealing with a need for a little money, because we've squished everything down tight. Could be in the events, maybe on buying a car that blew up or whatever, but it's gonna happen. Now, next year, if we get into it earlier, it would have less likely of happening.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Carl?
So, at this time, I have four items that have been discussed, all combined here. One's the Eagle Cam, um, one's the exotic removal for the Tortoise Preserve, at least taking step one, Riverfest, and then a, a, a new festival.
Right.
Okay. So, we need council's direction on what you want us to do budget-wise with each of those.
A festival which has been approved by this council, by the way. So, I think, Mike, how do you, why don't you kick us off here? You wanna put them together, separate them? What would you like to do? Because you pulled this, right?
Mayor, we didn't approve any. This is, what festival do we approve?
Laura?
You approved a special event permit for the Spanish Festival. Hispanic Heritage Festival. That did not, at the time, include budgeting.
I'm really confused now. The one that, that you talked about, I thought that was an addition to that.
This is a separate event that would be this fall?
This was not brought forward during the budgeting process. This was a special event permit that was brought through at the ne- last meeting and was approved by council, just like we do all of our special event permits. With, there was no funding. Um, it was approved as, as a permit to happen in, you know, in the city of Benita Springs and offer co-sponsorship of adding it to our city website and BTV.
Yes, we did approve that. Okay. But then the one that we're, that you're, that Carl is talking about is separate from that, correct?
That is that exact one.
Same thing, same thing.
Oh, well, then there's...
Yeah, same thing.
I thought it was an addition. That's...
No, same, I'm sorry, same thing.
You're asking for additional funding for that one that we, that we approved.
Yeah, there were zero funding requests. It's been approved. Now, because it's budget season, there has been a request for that nominal amount.
So, this is the same event that just took place?
No, no.
This is a different event?
Different.
So, this is not the Fiesta event. The Fiesta event is currently in the budget with funding, and it was approved during our last budget workshop. In the meantime, at the last council meeting, we had a special event permit come through and ask for a permission to have their event. Council approved it, just like you would approve Taste of Benita, um, any of our other events that come permitted. Now, the request is, so you have Fiesta, it's totally a separate event, that has budgeting, that has funding, that's approved. You now have event that's permitted, approved to happen in the city, approved to have advertising on BTV and the website. Now, they are requesting to have funding go with that. That is up to you now to decide.
Right. Thanks for that clarification, Laura. Thank you. So, Mike, you pulled this. How do you want to handle these?
Um, so, with, with the Gopher Tortoise Preserve, um, are, are, we're looking at just doing some exotic removal, complete removal? I mean, what are we looking at cost-wise?
We believe right now, just to give you kind of a ballpark idea right now, is probably going to be close to thirty thousand dollars for a property that size.
For the exotic removal?
Exotic removal. But understand that this, this whole area used to be part of a trailer park. So, when you go in there and start cleaning things out, you've got concrete pads. I mean, it, it cost us almost seventy-five thousand dollars just to do exotic removal and do site work for cleaning out concrete pads on the dog park, dog park side. So, it's a significant amount of money. If council wants us to do this, we're absolutely, I mean, as a step one towards a Tortoise Preserve, we, we certainly can do that.
So, i- is exotic removal something you can do in sections? Could we do half this year, half next year? Or do you worry about it, you know, creeping back into what you cleared out already?
You're gonna worry about it creeping back in, so it's best to do it all at one time if you're gonna do it.
And with the exotic removal, do you have to do the pads and everything right then, or can that be a separate step?
That could be a separate step to remove the pads. It, it most likely would be cheaper to do it all at one time, just due to getting companies in and having everything already ready to go. Um, but it can be just exotic removal first and then the pads, the following. Because once we get in there, we're not sure how many pads or what is in there.
And I, I might suggest we do it all at once, only because we are in a heavy construction time now and getting contractors for jobs like this becomes more difficult, because they have other things that they can spend their time doing and making money. So, my guess is if we try to split them up, unless the economy tanks, and none of us wants that, um, trying to do the, the concrete pads separately would probably be more costly than if we did it all at once.
Correct.
Thank you. Amy?
Not to throw a monkey wrench, but are there other parks that have a need for this exotic removal that might have a priority? Which one would, would this be a priority among all the parks that you know?
I mean, we haven't prioritized, but we do have exotics in, in all of our parks. And in the ones that have, such as Community Park, that is built into our already, our maintenance budget of that park, because it's already developed. So, anything that's already developed, we do it through regular maintenance. Um, ones that aren't developed, we typically will just do them on a, a need-by-need basis, based on what we want to do. Um, certain areas, such as, for example, Windsor Park, the people in the neighborhood don't want it opened up. So, it depends on, on what the neighborhood wants, what everyone is looking at, because it is a buffer for a lot of things, too. Um, so, this one, though, it, it's just a buffer to, to a church, so I, it shouldn't be an issue on getting rid of the exotics in that area. But it would be in addition to the park of opening it up and not just having one section of it open.
Uh, Counsel, Greg, do you have anything further?
No, I just, I, I agree with Mike. I think that we need to get it done. Um, I know, I just don't understand, I know that Southwest, Southwest Florida Water Management came by my place of business or where I work, and they made us remove them. And it was seventy, eighty thousand dollars for us to do it, like a two-acre area. So, I know it's not cheap, but I think we need to do it.
I did some at my house a couple of days ago.
What do you charge?
We'll have a coastal cleanup at the park.
Yeah, my, what's my rate? Yeah, trust me. I didn't happen to notice it myself, but my wife did happen to notice.
So, you, you would recommend thirty thousand on that line item? Uh, Eagle Cam, what would we be looking at dollar-wise there, you think?
The Eagle Cam, we would like to do more research and bring that one back to you, just because we're still in that process and we're trying to get more information on the different ways of doing it. Um, as well as, that would also, if you would prefer, that would give us an opportunity to look at the other location. Um, so, if you didn't want it at River Park, because I can't buffer the private property side, that maybe we could put one at that location. That would give us a little more time.
Well, and I was thinking about just the cam, you know, because I, I think that's the, the least intrusive. And, and I believe they, when they did the presentation, they said they do it when the birds aren't there, so that's how they don't spook them.
That is gonna be difficult to do that, because it would need to be done now, which is in September, because the eagle will be coming back. So, that may be something we have to push off to the next year, because we're already pretty close to September to do it now.
Well, it would need to be in this up-and-coming budget, so we could have it done before the following. So, so we'd want to put a line item in this budget then for it.
Yeah, but I, just so everyone is aware, I can't do it now, because it's just too quickly. I can't get a permit and all of those things that quickly.
Come on, why not?
I know.
So, so might, might I suggest if council, just for, to, to move us along if we can, so for the Eagle Cam, if council's okay, we will just do additional research, as well as looking at the other nest and determine what is the most economical to get the Eagle Cam up and going.
Can, can we do just a placeholder?
And put a placeholder.
Well, we, sure, absolutely. We can put dollars in there.
For this year, yeah, for this year's budget, yes.
But we'll, we'll, well, you're talking seventeen, eighteen budget, right?
Yeah, this budget we're working on.
We can do that, um, or we can come back to you and give you a number later, even after the budget's adopted, and you can just make an amendment to the budget. There's an opportunity.
I'd like to put a placeholder in, but I don't want to speak over you, Mike. I just want...
Just something that's there.
Just so we all know what, what's there and how much.
So, we don't lose, so we don't lose track, right? So, do you have a recommendation for a number?
We don't have one.
Mike, do you have a recommendation for a number?
I, I, I mean, if it's just gonna be a placeholder, maybe, is it a thousand dollars? I, I don't know.
Ann, would you rec, what do you recommend for a placeholder?
Uh, based on the information that Nicole mentioned about the utility part of it, I would think fifteen to twenty thousand.
Let's put fifteen.
Okay.
If, if it pleases the council...
Do you need a vote on that, Carl?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna need votes on all of these.
Okay.
But we'd recommend fifteen for the Eagle Cam, and we may have to come back to you and adjust that number later, as long as we understand that. Uh, thirty thousand for Tortoise Preserve exotic removal, five for Riverfest, and two for the new festival event. The Hispanic Heritage.
Great.
Event. Now, I mean, that's kind of what I've heard in all of this.
Carl, God bless you. I'm making a motion to that effect. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. We can vote on the sep- yes, Ann, I'm sorry.
Just to clarify then, that would also, will your motion also cover the items on the green sheet, items two and three?
Oh, yes, yeah. Oh, yes, those. Yes, yeah, yes, indeed, Ann, thank you. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion on the package. Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. Carl, yeah?
Mr. Mayor, before we move on the agenda, I do want to go back to consent and confirm that the vote you took included the erratas that we had sent to you, just for the record. Just want to make sure everything's okay there.
Well, just, I had pulled, I had pulled H. We hadn't, we had...
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
But I just want to make sure that the vote to approve everything else included, you included all of your erratas, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, um, H, Amy?
I just pulled that because I was confused over whether this was for Saturday or Sunday, because we did get one email that said that they didn't feel we should have it for both Saturday and Sunday.
We have, we have an answer for that. Throughout the document, it says Sunday.
Yeah.
In the title, it says Saturday.
Right.
That was a mistake. There are, it's Sundays.
So, this is in addition to the one we already have approved for Saturday? Uh, so, can I just have some feedback about, you know?
Uh, the Saturday application is the flea market application in partnership with the Lions Club. Um, so, they, this is, uh, they operated last year on Saturdays as a flea market and Sundays as a farmer's market. Currently, you have approved applications for local routes to operate on Saturdays at the Promenade. This does not affect that. That's approved. Um, and you have, you have already approved a Saturday flea market at this location, Rhodes. Uh, the applicant is asking again, they were successful, somewhat successful last year at this location, and they would like to continue on as a farmer's market on Sunday mornings.
And did we get any feedback in regard to, um, traffic or moving in and out of that thing, or what, what was...
Uh, Councilmember, I live out in that area. I can tell you, I drive by it multiple times every Sunday. At most, we saw maybe ten tents. Um, it's just has, it does not, it's not producing traffic, probably that they're even pleased with, but it's, it's not creating a lot of traffic.
Okay. And just one more question, because I thought when we had the last discussion about, um, farmer's markets is that the previous council had, had some, I, restriction in regard to having farmer's markets and flea markets all, all over the city in competition to our in-place, uh, commercial properties. Um, would this still be in keeping with that policy that had been started by the other council? Because I thought there was a restrict, you know, we have the, uh, I forgot what is the, the one all the way out on Benita Beach Road?
Flamingo Island.
Oh, Flamingo Island. I thought we had a restriction on the locations.
There, there was some restrictions on the locations, and we did discuss it. Um, there were some provisions made to the ordinance during the process at the, uh, last year when we were dealing with the farmer's markets. Um, those were made, and the applicants seemed to be happy.
to be happy. We have not had any other applications come in in regards to a farmer's market or flea market, other than the two that, that we've brought forward.
This was the sponsorship requirement, council recalls.
Okay. Okay. Aye, so move then.
Okay. There's been a motion?
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, Carl, Audrey, we're good there, right, with everything? We had a lot going on there. Okay. We're gonna move on to mayor and council member items. A, a resolution accepting the resignation of a member of the local planning agents, agency, and appointing a new member to fill the unexpired term. Okay. We did have a gentleman tender his resignation. And Deb, do we, we have ballots here?
Yes, we do.
We've had four folks apply? Five?
Five.
Five. And, and those names?
They're listed.
Are our four, yes, are listed and are forthcoming?
Yes.
Great. So do we want to distribute?
Do you have ballots?
The ballots, please?
They're coming.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd, where, what district was he?
Mr. Byrd was in District, the, help me here, four, I believe. Four. Four. Four.
I believe he was in four.
Yeah. No, he is in four. I'm, I'm just...
And since this is...
Too much information, but thinking back five years when I was out roaming around there, right, right. But it was, it stayed four. The other side of the river changed, on the south side of the river, and he's on the north side of the river. And for those wondering at home, the folks that have applied, Alan Glazier, District One, Melanie Black Amato, District Four, Tony Lee, District Two, Linda Schwartz, District Four, and Robert Sharkey, District Three. So...
And everybody put their name on it, right?
Yes.
Yep.
No mystery voting, Fred. Put your name on it.
Right. You cannot have secret ballots.
No secret ballots.
No secret.
How about a weak ballot?
Yeah. Well, I'm a weak mayor. I'm not a strong mayor. I'm a weak mayor, right. I guess we'll just wait a second. There's just a few ballots there.
Linda Schwartz has three votes, hell, Tony Lee one, and Robert Sharkey one.
Okay. Great. So I'll make a motion to accept Linda Schwartz as the new member of the LPA. There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Great. Ford to zip, she's in. All right. We're gonna move on now to an update on the Southwest Florida, oh my goodness, okay, Water Projects Group. Councilman Forbes.
Right. Trying to make this real simple and short. As you recall, the city manager and Matt Feeney recommended we appoint somebody to be in this group where it's, I call it a water summit, a water project, but what it is, South Florida Water Management has organized a group of people, and it's fairly diverse. There are members of Astero are on it, ourselves, other, other municipalities, but their Board of Realtors has representatives, developers have representatives. It's loaded with a number of consultants that make a good fee for designing water retention and storm management for developments and all that. What, what this is all about, South Florida Water Management's got about nine million dollars they're gonna give out in the upcoming cycle of giving grants. Generally speaking, you, you would think that everybody gets shot at some big money, but most of the awards are more like a hundred, two hundred thousand, and they're with matching funds, and they typically like projects that are almost gonna go anyway, and so they throw money in on it. But the big thing is, and this is the flag that got me appointed to this thing, or through city council asking me to do it, the South Florida Water Management has been lobbied by several consultants to update the existing computer modeling program that, where they can water model flooding caused by different-sized storms of a certain area of the county. They can oper, they can also look at the effects on water quality and all that. The, they want to update it, which is good. They want to bring in the latest GIS topo data, which is much more accurate. They want to refine it so the grid that the data comes out on is smaller than what they have now. The big thing is, at a couple meetings, and Matt Feeney can attest to that, I would prefer not to say who are lobbying for this, but there is a group of significant people that have said they want this thing done in such a way that it will not only be able to tell us what we need to do to reduce flooding, improve water quality, water quantity and all that, but they want it to be used as a potential tool to look at environmentally sensitive areas and determine whether or not they could be restored or should be, but also could you put in a development in an area that's environmentally sensitive. And it's kind of like, a little bit like the couple of these projects that went in on Corkscrew Road that you read a lot of somewhat concern about. So anyway, I'm looking for direction. Does city council want me to just gather information? Do we want to go on a record to saying that we support upgrading the water model, but we are not in favor of seeing taxpayer money be used to develop a way to use, take this model and use it as a tool to put city councils and other organizations a position of, oh, well, I guess we should develop that environmentally sensitive area.
Well, I think we all probably have some thoughts here. I'll just kind of get us kicked off. But Fred, you've been, we've all been involved, and we've, we all are familiar with the issue, the issues, because they are complex. But you've been, I'll use one of my favorite phrases, you've been drilling down on it a little bit. What, what, what are you recommending? What are your?
I, I think it would be good to go on record and say that we're not in favor of this being used or developed so it can be used as a tool to take environmentally sensitive areas, whether they're on the coast, whether they're in the county's DRGR, whether it's in the city's DRGR, or other environmentally sensitive areas. We've got enough pressures coming that way anyway, so. But that's just my own opinion. That's why I'm looking, whatever you, whatever the majority of council wants, that's gonna be, it's not gonna be a flyover.
No, I understand. I'll, and I'll go, Mike, I'll start with Mike, and then I'll come down here. Mike?
No, I, I would agree with Fred.
Okay.
Okay. Greg?
I agree with Fred up to the point, you know, I think the updated information's needed. I mean, you know, at one point, they thought the world was flat, then the updated information will let us know that it's, it's pretty round right now. So I mean, I think we get the updated information. Do I want to see development out there? No, but I think we need to get the right information out there with that.
Amy?
I support Councilman Forbes' position. I don't think that we should use taxpayer money to develop models by which we can develop sensitive lands. I mean, sensitive lands can always be developed, but there are reasons why you, you want them not developable, because we don't, our models are just that. So I update the models, but don't include the development aspect to it.
All right. Got, got it. And then, let me just briefly give you a little quick update on something. There are a number, that, as you recall, I gave you all articles on what Miami was planning on doing to dispose of three hundred million gallons of affluent and sewage sludge a day, namely drilling wells ten thousand feet deep and using high-pressure injection pumping to push that stuff down to ten thousand feet. Now, here's, here's the rest of the story. There are already several other cities that are not only planning to do it, but they are doing it. There's a big ruckus in Jackson County where the, the sewage disposal company there is planning to do the same thing, and the whole county commission, the county manager, their local state rep, and state senators are up in arms. I'm still gathering in information, there are experts, such as Jim Beavers from the Regional Planning Council, that have serious concerns about. The most alarming, two alarming things. This is currently approved by EPA and DEP. Now, you would think that's okay, but you want to keep in mind, that's the same group that have said it's okay to do fracking in Florida, where most of the experts say Florida, because of its underlying stone or geological makeup, is not a good site for fracking. So just because they've approved it, does not mean that we shouldn't be concerned. The other alarming thing that I've come up with so far, it appears that even though we've got cities doing this, or, or larger waste disposal companies, there's apparently no test monitoring of what's going on down there at that ten thousand-foot level or above it. The, the concerns that some of the experts that are concerned about it have is that Florida has a layer of aquifer and then a layer of stone, and a layer of aquifer and a layer of stone going all the way down. And Florida's layers are not as strong as in other areas of the country, and they're somewhat more porous. So when you push all that stuff down there, under the tremendous pressure you have to put it in, it's gonna follow the path of least resistance. So if it's easier to go up than it is to go down or out, it's gonna go wherever the, wherever it can go the easiest with the path of least resistance. So I'm still looking into this. I'm gonna be gathering more information, talking to some other experts, and I'll come back to you. One last little trivia thing, but it's kind of interesting. If you remember the wet season we had in 2013, I know Peter O'Flynn and I went out, and we were in the DRGR weekly. One point, the bridge was underwater. In fact, he has a photograph of me standing on a bridge in hip boots, and he's in a kayak. But anyway, at that point...
Bring that to the next meeting, Fred.
Yeah, I will. At, at that point, the river was cresting at just a little more than ten feet. This last, these last two big rains we had, one was a week where we had roughly three rains that amounted to about nine inches. The river crested at something like eleven point four feet. And then we had that other rain of about a week or so ago where we got about three inches, and the river went back up to a little over eleven feet, not to eleven point four, but about eleven point one. So we are seeing higher levels in the river, and it's, the weather patterns, it could also be there's more development has occurred since thirteen. So a little more data on water. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Fred, I, I just want to reiterate, I think a really critical thing that needs to be explored, and I don't know if we could just ask staff to send out inquiries to the, to cities in Lee and Collier County, well, the municipal water things, if they are doing this. I would like to know where along the West Coast this is being done, if it is being done. Because certainly if it's within a, a regional area that's close to us, that we, we need to be more aggressive in, in our approach here.
It's a good point. I think what I'll also do is when I'm at the Florida League of Cities Council, our meeting this week, I'm on a committee called Utilities, Natural Resources, and a couple other things for good measure.
He got loaded up there, too, on Committee of Science.
I'm gonna ask them to make an inquiry like you're wanting. Because they, every city virtually in Florida, including the coastal ones.
Well, there's gotta be a list of munis, of water utilities. Just call them and say what, what they're doing.
Yeah.
And ask them to get back to us.
Right.
There can't be that many up, up the West Coast.
Okay.
So Fred, you brought a few things forward here. Does any, anything require a vote? No, you're just updating us on, okay.
No.
All right, great. Anything else?
Well, why don't we give me, why don't we go on record?
Yes.
That we voted to have me say we don't agree with this.
Okay. You're gonna make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that I'd be instructed to, at that meeting coming up next week, I believe, to inform them that City of Benita Springs City Council has voted not to support development of that model for the purpose of evaluating areas that are in sensitive environmental areas for development.
Second.
But we're in favor of upgrading the model.
Great. There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Okay. Fred, C. Excuse me, update on the zoning board workshop.
Oh, I did that.
He did that. And I thought you did. My apologies. Okay. And we have an errata sheet here, conceptual approval of a proposed economic development grant for commercial property located at 10450, once again, 10450, West Terry Street, Benita Springs, Florida 34135. Councilman Gibson, and this is green sheet number seventeen dash oh eight oh three one two. Mike?
Okay. Yeah, at a previous meeting, we had talked about what was happening with the laundromat there, due to the construction of the downtown project with the, the road. Even though it's not a taking in the normal sense, you know, the sidewalk basically took out all this parking on the front of his building. So we agreed to, you know, have staff look into what could be done to help remedy the situation. And so you have a, a large picture there that our city architect drew up of redoing the parking lot to the side for him. And as far as being able to do this, the, the best way we could fit it into the budget was to put it under the economic development. We just have to make a finding that, you know, we, we're waiving the twenty percent match, and we're also going over the cap to, to get this done. But I mean, the business was severely impacted with the, the sidewalk going in, and this is, you know, something that we're, it's gonna help him out, keep the business going, and also we're, we're kind of beautifying the area, because it's, you know, increasing the landscaping and the other areas. So if I can, I'd like to make a motion to approve this with the finding that, you know, we're, we're gonna waive the twenty percent match, and, and we are going over the cap.
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mike. You're welcome.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor.
Ah, yes, Arlene.
Just, just to clarify, we are gonna work as quickly as we can to try to have these funds, these funds, they are available in this fiscal year under that line item, but we may need to come back to you if the project does, is not complete by September thirtieth. Because under the program, it's still, is required to be complete and inspected. So in case we're closer to that deadline, we'll be coming back to you.
It may have to be a carryover amendment, push the money to next year.
Right, right. Great. Thank you. Wonderful. Okay, public hearing. Item A, take action on petition filed by attorney Neil Montgomery Esquire Pavey's Law Firm on behalf of applicant BG Mine LLC for contraction of real property from the City of Benita Springs, and this is green sheet number seventeen dash oh eight oh three one five. Audrey?
And city council, you've already taken action this morning, and that is, you agreed to continue with the case till September twentieth at the request of Ms. Montgomery due to unavailability of a citizen, unavailable, unavailability of a witness.
Wonderful. Thank you. So we'll move on to item ten, the second reading of the following ordinances, and public comment is allowed.
Yes, sir. So let me do the title pop first, and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about the ordinance, as well as a request for continuation. This is an amendment, this is second reading of, that's been continued of the following ordinance. This is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Three, Development Standards, amending Section Three dash two nine two, traffic impact statements. Standards, Amending Section 3-292 Traffic Impact Statements Provided for Conflicts of Law, Severability, Codification, Scrivener's Errors, Inclusion in Code, and Effective Date. This is the second reading that's been continued multiple times, originally advertised on February 15, I'm sorry, on December 7, 2016, for second reading. It's been also advertised on, not advertised, but continued to January 4, 2017, and then February 15, 2017, to a time and date certain, which is August 16, 2017, today. Staff is requesting a continuation of this ordinance again till October 18, 2017. So you may be asking, what is happening, and why are we doing all these continuations? The green sheet goes in and explains this. So the ordinance is the simplest part of the document, and what you don't have here today, because we knew it was going to be a continuation to a time and date certain, is the administrative code. And the administrative code would have the methodology and manner for which traffic impact statement analysis are prepared at time of zoning. And by adoption of this guideline, it changes the analysis. There were some questions as to the modeling, and Jay Sweet is here, and he can discuss the modeling with you. I think contrary to what council thought was going to happen with the numbers, the numbers actually came out differently. So it has been more refined. I do have on the green sheet to schedule the administrative code for September 6, so if we needed to tweak it before adoption of the ordinance, we could do so. Due to unavailability of Mr. Sweet, I'm going to change that to September 20.
Can we do that also in October? Because I won't be at either of the September...
October would be fine. We could do it concurrently, or we could do it at the first meeting, the administrative code, and then the second meeting, hold the ordinance. The ordinance is very simple. It just basically says you have to follow the administrative code. But before we have an, before we start saying you need to follow an administrative code, I'd like to have an administrative code.
That was going to be my comments on this today. Why are we, you know, saying you have to do something when we don't know what that something is yet, so?
Well, and we're very close. I think if you wish, you can hear from Mr. Sweet, and we can discuss that. Yes, I understand the logic of it. And even after adoption of the administrative code, it is foreseeable that there needs to be additional refinements. So I mean, we could go ahead with the ordinance, recognizing that we will have a code relatively soon to be adopted, but he's not here September 6, and I prefer for both him and the engineer who's been assisting him, Trish Goff, to also be available. So we could move this to October, if that would work.
If we're going to have, are we going to have the code in place by October?
The code can be one reading...
So we don't have to vote for it in advance of knowing what we're actually voting on?
Yes, I agree with that.
Would hate to be accused of being like Congress.
Well, that's the reason why we suggested September 6, to start the code review, and then September 20, so that you had some time to tweak it out before our next hearing. Because we know that the adoption of the administrative code is going to be more controversial than the adoption here, because the traffic, many of you have heard me probably talk about how traffic engineers and traffic planners, from a type of science, it's a lot different than other civil engineering, where there is a lot of human behavior that influences calculations. And because of that, there's always a couple different sides to the story. Every traffic engineer has a different opinion as to human involvement and movements. In other words, I'm saying they're probably worse than lawyers. But in this case, yes, we would try to have it scheduled so all of you could be here and all could have information. Again, Jay can speak on the administrative code if he wanted more certainty, but that's why we're requesting a continuation.
Right. And Mike, given your schedule, you're requesting October? And October is fine, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, I just need time and date certain. I don't have my calendar, so if the clerk could just tell me, is it October 2 is our city council meeting, the first?
October 4th?
It's not like we can't move, we've done it enough.
October 4?
Yeah.
Would you like both the ord, I have October 18 for the ordinance, would you like October 4 for the administrative code, or would you like us to do the continuation to a time and date certain for October 4 for both of them?
I'd put them both the same, because, you know...
And you'll be ready for October 4?
I'd like to know what the code is. I mean, I'd like, absolutely. So I'd like to see that first.
Do it 4th and 18th. Do the code on the...
Do it 4th and 18th.
In a way, because it's time to digest it, then...
Right.
Also, if you have it available earlier, if I could get a copy of it, I'd like to start reading earlier, so...
That's fine, but I think that what Councilman DeWitt said would start the code before you looked at approving something before you've seen...
Yeah, I don't want to have an hour to digest it and get feedback from the community and from everybody.
Right. So let's see the code. Let's know what we're wrapping our mind around, and then give it a couple weeks, and we'll come back and discuss it.
Yeah, because on the 4th, we may even say, hey, we still need to work on this more and tweak it some more. We want to change the 18 to something else.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
And that's fine.
Right. Great. Thank you, John. Thank you. Audrey?
And I do need to vote on this.
Okay.
We are continuing the ordinance, and public can be taken at this time, public comment. The ordinance, the motion should be that the ordinance is being continued to City Council's October 18, 2017, meeting beginning at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers.
So moved.
Make that motion, or second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Okay, and now we will, and council, further discussion? Okay, public comment on this from anybody? Just on this, just on this issue? Okay, seeing none? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye. Okay. Audrey, anything else?
No.
Okay, we're going to move on...
Wait, hold on. I apologize. Yes, at this time, I do not have anything. I do have an additional add-on at City Attorney Port.
Okay, great. Thank you, Audrey. Now, we're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on any item at this time, please come forward.
Okay, Rick Steinmeier. Somehow, the city of Benita Springs doesn't have any sludge. Benita Springs Utility takes care of their sludge without pumping it into the ground. Why don't we just look locally and find out what they do with their sludge? I know, I know, I'm pretty sure I know what they do with it. They make fertilizer, make pellets and make fertilizer out. But they don't have a problem with their sludge. They don't have a trouble with their wastewater either. So I think we all look at our own utility and tell West Coast what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public wishing to speak at this time? Please come forward.
My name is Abhil Youssef.
Bill?
Morning. I do want to thank you all, Mr. Mayor, the council, Carl, Audrey, for all your help on the parking that we lost, and all your verification and all your good work. Please keep it up.
Thank you.
I thank you for all your help.
Thank you. And thank you what you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Other members of the public?
That was another mayor of survey right in front of you. I just want to thank Councilman Forbes. First of all, I want to thank all of you for this additional budget added, item add-ons. I think it's going to help our quality of life here. Councilman Forbes serves on the Astero Bay Agency on Bay Management as well, and on the Regional Planning Council, appointed representative to that body. We had a discussion, a presentation by the Regional Planning Council Director on Monday about the future of the Regional Planning Council. There's some movement afoot, and possibly a bill, in the state legislature do away with regional planning councils. I think we need to be supportive. Your budget is reflective and supportive of the regional planning councils. Our particular regional planning council has been kind of targeted, both by the Florida Association of Regional Planning Councils, which is supposed to be our lobbying group, and the Regional Planning Council pays $40,000 to have them as the lobbyists. It's complicated. But anyhow, our regional planning council has given so much to this community, some of our firefighter training funds, the only way that they can get received locally is through the regional planning council. It's specifically designated to the regional planning council. Our director of the regional planning council has gone to the different counties who are considering withdrawal. Our county is considering withdrawal, which I think is a wrong move, and I think we need to express that to them, that regional planning is important, not only for, you know, community development and that kind of thing. Yes, we have our own community development department, and frankly, I don't know why we moved to FGCU. I'd like to see us move back to the regional planning council. They have been able to support things like get our restoration study for Spring Creek done. Water quality has been expressed by those bodies that are considering moving out to be the number one issue. And, you know, that fits right into this council and our community, because water, 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 that's what we're all about. Look behind you, you know? Imperial River, Oak Creek, Spring Creek, the beach, the back bays. So they're going to be focusing on that also. So I hope you'll be supportive for the regional planning council to remain, in fact, our regional planning council was the founding regional planning council. They're the ones that issued the legislation to have regional planning. It's very important that we put our heads together to decide what as a region, how we're going to work together, transportation, public health, public safety, you know, the environment, all these different issues. Okay, next. So the other update from that meeting was that, I don't know if you saw it in the news press, but there was a water quality report card for Charlotte Harbor South, down to Naples, actually down to the 10,000 Islands. And we're not, and I sent that to you. I know you've got a lot on your plate, and you had 200 emails about Pelican. I would like to ask you, the report card is specific to each watershed, and there has been a report card for our area, for Astero Bay, which includes Imperial and the Astero River. If you could entertain having them come to give you the report card, because it also includes recommendations of the things that you can do to improve our water quality, so I'd like to ask that, and see if one of you, maybe Councilman Forbes, could sponsor that report card presentation here at the council. And then also to make a declaration, maybe your outreach committee, which I'll be signing up for, could declare Hispanic Heritage Month. We'll get there.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hey, no, thank you. Thank you for your public service. Really appreciate it. I know it takes a lot of time out of your life, and I thank you for making our community better. Good fighters.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the city attorney's report. Audrey?
Thank you, council. So I have here permission to advertise an ordinance to revise the community development, planning, and zoning fees. You have it in your RADA packet today. We do need to have some lead time, because it does require, as a land development code amendment, a first and second reading and public hearing. The ordinance, the fees should not be anything that you have not seen before. They're pretty much the fees that we have with the changes that have been incorporated or requested by city council. Please note that there is some language as to cost recovery deposit, and that is for outside counsel in the zoning and development order arena. That could be for tool design, DPZ, whoever is necessary. And what will be happening in those reviews is that we will have applications, and amount will be put modestly in escrow, and as we receive bills, they will be invoiced accordingly, or money will be withdrawn, and then that account will be refed as necessary, depending on the complexity. Some cases will not have that much complexity, and of course, that money will be returned, the same as we do with advertising. And that's on page two of the ordinance. If you have questions, I can answer to the cost recovery, and I believe John Goldman can answer to the other application issues.
Counsel?
John, do you have any, like, discretion as far as what needs to be the extra, you know, reviewed outside with Tool and, you know, McMahon and all that? I would hope that just everything isn't going to them. It's, you know, just kind of what really, really applies, and if something's straightforward, you know, they're putting in exactly what we're asking for with the extra buffers and the shared use path and all that, that we don't, we wouldn't burden them with extra time on the permitting process, and then also the extra expense.
We distribute applications as the council directs, and you're correct, if something is not going to be affected by one of your policies, your direction, then there's no reason to send it. Tool design reviews are applications for consistency with the Benita Beach Road corridor. And if there, a project that's along the corridor, if there's not going to be an impact, especially an external impact, there's no reason for Tool to review it. If there is going to be an external impact, they are sent the application for review. Most of the time, if it's a simple application, we can get comments back and let the application, or the applicant address it and move forward. So there's not a lot of back and forth. But we only send applications to these outside consultants as directed by the council. If the council wants to establish a different limit or a specific limit as to what goes and what does not go, we would be happy to follow that instruction.
Well, and as far as like larger developments, of course, we'd want their input, but I'm just thinking some of those smaller parcels, that it might just be an undue burden, both time-wise and money-wise, for them to have to go through all the extra steps and expense.
To date, I have not seen the reviews from Tool Design, if we were to look for a cost recovery, increase the cost to developers to any significant degree. It's been, the comments may be significant, but the applicant can then take those and address them or choose to appeal to you. There's not a lengthy discussion process with anyone at Tool going back and forth. So you don't see a lot of time on their part being billed, either to the city or based upon this fee schedule to the applicant.
And you mentioned it is, like, we kind of put the money in escrow. If we use it, we use it, but if it doesn't get used, it's going back to the applicant.
Exactly. Yes, sir.
Right. And also, remember, some things, the best way I use to explain is, some of the best Supreme Court cases dealing with land use are not on the big developments. They're going to be on some of the smaller things. So there will be a point where you cannot ask for additional monies, because it's fighting the application, and that you can't basically cost them out of turning in an application. We'd have a due process issue at that point. So there needs to be some restraint. So there won't be a 100% recovery of attorney fees. That would be unrealistic if council thinks that's going to occur, but it will be helping to offset some of the costs associated. And that's what council requested.
In regard to the Tool Design, I think that's really important, that we have some kind of a read back from them on virtually all the products, unless it's totally irrelevant. I mean, and we would rely on staff to do that, because we're just implementing the Benita Beach Road vision. And unless we get the guidance and reminders of what that's going to require in order to get to the point where we want to, I think it's important that they at least make some comments. And then we could disregard them, or you could say, no, that doesn't make any sense to me, or it doesn't fit into our other plans.
Yes, ma'am. And if you remember, the council had determined that community development is supposed to take the comments received from Ian and make determinations as to what actually constitutes consistency with that vision. If an applicant disagrees, you're exactly right. They would come to you, and you would be the arbiter of that discussion.
But probably, if it came to council, we'd say, did you ask Ian?
Yes.
I'm sure that the question would come from us, so you might as well do that a priority.
And to date, the applications that were received have all needed to go to Tool Design. So while I think there is a little bit of discretion there in terms of what has an impact and what does not have an impact, what we've received to date since our initial direction has needed to go to him.
Greg? Anything? No? Fred? Okay.
Just requesting permission to advertise, and we'll hold the first reading September 6, second reading September 20. I recognize council schedules now. I have this, the effective date, I believe, going November 1, because this is not something you would want to apply retroactively until it's in place, so that would coincide with our 30-day effective date required by charter. If you wish for it to go with a later date to coincide with anything, we can certainly do so, but remember, I have to have that lead time per the city charter.
All right. I'll make that motion to go ahead and permission to advertise.
September 6 and September 20.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Audrey.
That's it. I talked to you about the other items as far as the litigation this week. It's been a good week for the city of the Native Springs.
Great, thank you, Audrey. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item A is just a simple request for an extension of the loan with the Everglades Wonder Gardens to fit into a timetable that actually we've mutually agreed to, and that is that they want time, number one, to fill the vacancies on their board. They can have up to 25 people, they've only got about 18 right now. They'd like time to do that, and also get that accomplished within a timeframe that all the new board members, or at least most of them, can be at their September 15th retreat that's already scheduled, and that's for the Wonder Gardens Board. And then a joint meeting with the city council and the Wonder Gardens Board in October. We just need additional time if we're going to work on a stewardship agreement, and of course, we're going to need the outcome of the joint meeting between council and their board to work on that agreement. And that assumes, of course, that we want to do it all at once, but I know there's been a couple of times when council members have asked, you know, why haven't we just assumed ownership of the property? And really, unless we have at least the most minimal operating agreement in place, I would not recommend we take that property over until at least that's in place, or until this full agreement, the stewardship agreement, is reached hopefully later this year. So, but really, it would be council's pleasure, if you wish for the city to become owners of the property sooner than later, we would need to move to put, again, a very minimal operating agreement in place. It's just like buying a house for investment, and you put a tenant in there, you need to have an agreement, even if it's minimal. Otherwise, there's no rules, so. Council's pleasure on this.
Okay, council? What are your...
I'll make a motion to continue.
Okay. Till December 1st.
Well, get a second there, because then I'm going to make a motion to slightly amend, very slightly, but I'll tell you what the amendment would be, maybe Councilman DeWitt may want to include it in his, and we don't have to go through two votes. I would like a preliminary draft of an operating agreement given to council at least a week before our last meeting in September, and for the purpose of then, we can look at that and come up with items that we may feel need to be added to that agreement, so that when we have this workshop with the Wonder Garden, that we'll have something to talk about with them as opposed to, we have the workshop and then we do the agreement, and then we have to then talk to them again about it. So that's my only thought.
Would a term sheet be acceptable? A term sheet would actually have the bullet points of what needs to be added to that agreement. It's sometimes easier to read for the parties to look at it through a term sheet.
If they want to give us things, when you get your draft done, that they would like to see added to it or amended, that's fine. But I would like to see it before we have that meeting with them, because there may be things that we may want to talk about, that we would be insistent be in that and all that. So I think it could be a much more productive meeting.
See it before we vote on it and discuss it once again?
We don't want to do like...
Amazing, yeah.
Well, no, I agree with you, I just, my only fear is, and my only concern is, I don't want to go into this meeting, whichever meeting it is with both boards, and make it into a negotiation. It shouldn't be a negotiation at that point.
And if I might add to that?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, is it okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
So remember, the prospect here is that, is the stewardship of the facility itself, and that we are partners in this, and we are working together to do that. So that does kind of go with Councilmember DeWitt's comments about, you know, this is not a negotiation in October, it's going to be, how can we work together, what's your vision, how can we help you? It's really going to be more of that type of approach, and I envision coming out of that meeting with all the parties understanding kind of what the parameters are, what the vision is, what they're going to be doing to meet that vision, and what the expectations are of the city. And so I think actually, having that joint meeting might be helpful in drafting the agreement. But again, council's pleasure on that, and those are just my thoughts based on what I've heard from council previously, and also in the meeting and the position that actually Councilmember Gibson provided to their board some time ago. So I don't know if Councilmember has any thoughts on it, but...
Is it possible to do a simple agreement so we can just go forward with taking over the property? That way, we don't have to keep extending this?
We have to extend it no matter what, because we need to have all of the terms in place, but in terms of just having the property transfer and then have them continue to operate under the extension until we get a final thing together, we certainly could work at that with them. And they may even want that. They may be fine with the transfer of the property at this point in time, but of course, we've got to have the minimal in place.
Yeah, as I say, we should at least, they, both parties should know what each one's roles and responsibilities should be at, like you said, at a minimal. We take it over whatever time, pick a date in the future, say it's October 1, and they don't know what they're supposed to be doing, because we haven't told them that, and I think we should have something in place to know that they're responsible for X, Y, and Z until a full contract or a full, you know, roles and responsibilities.
Temporary agreement, some kind of interim agreement or temporary agreement?
Yeah, until something gets out there, because I mean, if, God forbid, we get it in October, let's use October 1 fiscal year, and they go in and do something that we're not amenable to, we've got no recourse to say, hey, we don't like that. And then again, we still got to, I still think we have to address all the properties, because they're receiving rent from the Tangled Cafe, who's to receive that, is that coming to the city? Are we now landlords of that property? Those little details, I think, need to be worked out before we take stewardship of it.
And that... Now, maybe it needs to be done sooner than later. I agree with that.
I think that Councilman DeWitt hit on one of the items that we need to be looking at, and I think the city needs to be the lead on this, because when, let's just say hypothetically, that we go forward with this and we become the landlord of the restaurant that's currently, where Wonder Garden is the landlord. There are conditions in that lease that Wonder Gardens agreed to, that if we take the lease by assignment, which is what we would do, we would be the new landlord. Conditions that Wonder Gardens promised the restaurant they would adhere to, they're out from under it because they're no longer a party to the lease, and so we need to look at, what do we want to make sure is in that interim, interim or final agreement that ensures that what they had to expect from a Wonder Gardens will still continue.
And vice versa.
And that could be part of the agreement with the Wonder Gardens?
It could be, it should be, because if somebody says, we're going to do X, Y, and Z for you if you sign on this agreement, and then they don't have to do it because we're the new owner of the lease, then those people depended on, they relied on some of that language as enticement to sign the lease, to invest in the property.
Quick question, ma'am. Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Just to the city manager, is there any way before, I think to appease Councilman Forbes, is there any way before the meeting between the joint boards, is there any way we can get a list of, I hate to call them demands, but a list of what the Wonder Gardens thinks their roles and responsibilities may be?
And I would just, no, and I would just add one other thing to that. Who has oversight over the lease of the Twisted Tangle, the restaurant?
Well, right now, it's them.
Right.
Okay, but under a different ownership, that would switch to us, perhaps.
Because they have an agreement in place.
Yes.
Obviously.
Between the two of them.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have no oversight over that, currently?
Currently, no.
But there are conditions in that lease that says, the Wonder Gardens will do X, Y, and Z for the person that's leasing. Now, once we become the person that's leasing to the restaurant, they are out from under any things that they promised in that lease that they would do for the restaurant.
Well, unless there's a secession plan.
If there's a secession...
You can't, unless it's in our operating agreement, they're out of it.
Well, no, if there's in their contract the secession agreement, most contracts, I know labor contracts, there's a secession agreement, that if, let's use Local 3444, if the city took over the fire department, the contract stays in place until the expiration of the contract under a successor agreement. So if there isn't a secession agreement within their contract, then they would, it would still be in place.
Why don't I propose this? Why don't I propose each council get a copy of their lease, and you'll quickly see an area that there's no way you can make a secession agreement on that?
Well, I think there are two aspects to this operating agreement. One is what I call the business aspect. So clearly, while we're talking about these more general operating goals, that the city should be exploring things like the lease, and then they have another property too that was leased, or they use it...
The caretaker, you know?
The caretaker or something, I mean, there's, there are those kinds of aspects. It's just a business decision, so we need to explore that as we go. And I do think it would be beneficial to have a temporary kind of bare bones agreement so that we could take over the property while we break out the more broad range visionary kinds of concerns that we have, what their dreams are, what they're going to do, and how they're going to make progress. So that has nothing to do with these other kind of basic things, the insurance, all that kind of nuts and bolts kinds of things, and I think we have to do that first. That should have already been done, really, to see what we're taking on.
Yeah. Yeah, go, actually, Audrey, and I'm just going to, Carl, if you can add to our worksheet, because obviously we'll have an agenda and items we want to cover, the review of the lease with the Twisted Tangled Cafe, because I'm a horrible poker player, we all know that, so I'm going to lay it out there. I've heard concerns that that agreement is not being followed, not even closely, in any stretch, form, or imagination. Yes, Audrey?
Thank you. I just want to point out, and it's pointed out in the green sheet, we have not taken any actions on the mortgage other than extending the mortgage, so I have not received any direction to do anything else, contrary to us just continuing to extend it. And there is a remedies clause in there that just because we're waiving or currently not having an issue, you know, exercising the 30-day notice and the 15-day notice for the cure before any other action could be taken, we're not, I mean, I just want to make sure you guys know, I have not, you know, the city manager has not sent any letters, I have not prepared anything on that.
But the mechanism there, like, should we come to have a temporary agreement, is there like a timeframe by which we could actually execute it because of this, the wording of the mortgage? Because we wouldn't be, I mean, we wouldn't be calling the mortgage, we'd just come, they would sign a contract and we have a gentleman's agreement.
Right, we could set up some kind of remedies plan or cure plan, so that we don't need to go right at the D-word, I'm trying to avoid saying.
Thank you, Audrey.
So, yes.
We call it, I call it a workout, so we would have a workout agreement, and that we wouldn't have to go through the court to execute or to force the execution of it. We would, they agreed that they're, we're all going to come to a gentleman's agreement on the workout.
And we could set a time in the future for that, we can set, you know, where they can continue on with the program, set it up so there's an orderly transition.
So basically, doing what they're doing, but we would take control of the property, but we would first explore all these nuances, which I call the business side of it, rather than the visionary side of it.
Sure.
You know?
If that's council's pleasure, we're prepared to move in that direction, but we will need a vote.
Well, I would like to see it transfer sooner, specifically because we've allowed them not to make any more payments to us. But they're still accepting payments from the rental property. So I mean, it doesn't really seem fair, you know, the rental payment should either come to us, or, you know, if they're not paying anything right now, maybe she shouldn't pay anything right now, you know, so, just saying.
Yeah, no, that's a further thought, and I mean, I'll go one step further. How are we supposed to operate in good faith if indeed, they're not following the terms and conditions of the rental agreement that they have in place right now with the restaurant right there on the property? So, I won't get off on a tangent on that, but here we are operating in good faith, and I hear strong words that they're not doing the same within their own confines there of the property with their current tenant. So let's get that out there, let's chew on it, and let's find out the facts of that prior to the workshop, or we can have it at the workshop.
Mr. Mayor, I've heard the same things, but, you know, I've advised them that that is not an agreement the city's involved in, and the agreements between...
Not at the moment.
Well, true, not at the moment. So we've advised them to find other avenues to try to resolve their differences. We understand, once we take ownership of the property, that those relationships change. We understand that. And really, what we're looking for today, in addition to an approval of the extension, is clear direction as to whether you want us to take the property sooner or later, and of course, if you want us to take it sooner, it is my recommendation that we follow what we've been hearing, which is, we need something minimal business-wise in the interim.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'll just add, I find it gravely disappointing if those allegations are true. Gravely disappointing.
And they can be remedied in the lease.
Yes.
So again, I'll restate my motion, let's extend it to December 1.
Yes, sir.
And if we can get some type of roles and responsibilities that each of us think that we're going to have prior to the meeting in October to satisfy Councilman Forbes, but to extend it.
Hey, Fred, you going to second that? Is that what you're...
Yeah, I'll second it. We are going to get a preliminary draft of an agreement well before that workshop, though, right? Doesn't mean it's a final, but...
You're talking a minimal one, right?
Yes. Yeah, right.
The transition plan.
And I would also say that I do, in fact, support what Councilman Gibson has said, and that is, I think we need to take the property sooner, and then instead of being under the gun, if we have to have a final agreement worked out by 1 December, make it like 1 May, which gives everybody a lot of time.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second, further discussion, Mike, I think you have some.
So, the minimal agreement wouldn't take effect until December 1st then, if we're doing this extension, or could that be something that would be applied earlier and we take the property before December, or we're pushing the taking till...
Yes, there, okay, so, we're talking, okay, so we're talking, a minimal agreement would be a subset, in my mind, of the final agreement. And it, I think you would need a minimal agreement in place if you wanted to take the property sooner.
Sooner than December 1st, or just...
Sooner than December 1st. We could make it happen before then, I'm assuming we could do that, Audrey, but, and so, and then, once we're past that point, the minimal agreement, and we own the property, then you could buy additional time to work on the vision and those kinds of things. But really, council needs to decide what you want to do with the land, because, in fact, you could well resolve the issues at Twisted Tangle if the land were taken sooner, I believe. But that's, but that's up to council. So if council wants to take the land sooner, we'll do a minimal agreement to make that all happen and talk about the business things, and then still have the final overreaching agreement, minimal agreement being a subset of that.
Well, here's my question to, well, to both you and Audrey, how quick can that happen? And, comma, does that minimal agreement, I'm assuming here that it would have to be attainable to the Wonder Gardens? If we give them a minimal agreement, they say, ah, we don't like it, then we're going back to the, you know, the negotiation part of it. How quick, or how long do we think that's going to take? Because right now, we're talking, we're already at the end of August. I know Mike's not going to be here most of September, so now we're in October, we've got budget to worry about in September, and then the fiscal year's starting in October, so we're only talking a difference of maybe a month or two. Is it feasible with everything that we got going on the next two months to rush this along, and if we rush it along, are we hurting ourselves?
And, well, and with my absence in September, it's really only those two weeks that I'm gone, but it just coincides with the two weeks that we have council meetings. So if there is a special meeting on any of the other weeks, I would be here.
Okay.
Okay, so, if I can answer first, Audrey, and then you can pick it up?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, my thought of a minimal agreement is clearly an operating agreement. I would suggest to you that many of the terms we already have set within our loan documents will become part of that. But it's things like, you will do this, you know, you can't make these changes without the city's approval, you will carry full insurance, you will be fully liable for anything, any of the operations that occurs, you will be fully liable for taking care of all the property that they are responsible for, things like that, very basic, very basic.
And you feel that can be done in a timely manner?
I'll turn over to Audrey at this point.
Okay, so I need to go through and look at the actual, sorry, I'm looking at my documents here.
That's fine.
What I'm hearing... What I'm hearing, and I'm trying to take some good notes here, is we'll set this up into a dual process or multiple process. One will be taking the terms in the mortgage that had minimum operating agreement, minimum operating requirements, such as having satisfactory insurance to protect the property, making sure that our investment for hours of operation, that the place will be operational during certain times so that the citizens can take use of the facility, utilize the facility, with a fee, of course, and all of those requirements. And that'll be part of the transition plan while we work out the full operation and management agreement. There will also be terms, this is just based on what city council's saying in that transition plan, to discuss assignment of the lease of properties that they have entered into, because it's not just the restaurant, but the other parcel, as well as the date of which they are to provide us a deed and provide us the property to the name of the city, as opposed to us having the mortgage. At that point, we can, you know, extinguish the mortgage, once we have a full operation in mortgage. I'm sorry, we can extinguish the mortgage, once we have the property accepted, and that would be a release from them, and also subject to the operation and management agreement. But we do, we could set it up with a transition plan or workout plan until such time that we have the actual finite plan.
That's my question. How quick can that smaller plan be done? A week? A month?
I'd say I could work with the city manager and treat it as an immediate need and provide, if you authorize the city manager to send a letter out with that transition plan, and we can either send it out with blanks for dates or with dates.
So in 30 days? I guess that's my question. I'm just trying to see how quick, I mean, to satisfy, I know, I know...
Once I have terms, I can always prepare something. I mean, if we're talking continuity, that, you know, providing continuity is what they have agreed to anyway at this point. So I think that we should be in good shape. It's the other stuff that may take some negotiation, or we can just do demands, which is fine, because again, our only remedy in the mortgage is to accept the property. So we can have this transition plan worked out, that these are the terms that we feel are necessary. Now, the alternative is they could say goodbye, and you and I and Councilmember Corumba will be going there to feed animals, you know, so.
Okay, so I don't think that's what's going to happen. I think we can work with the Wonder Gardens Board.
Make it happen as quick as possible.
I mean, let me just ask, would the first meeting in October be doable, Audrey?
I can, I mean, I'm just going to take the mortgage, as far as the document, I'm going to take the terms in the mortgage, because that's what's been agreed to previously by council and what has been, and as well as Wonder Gardens, and make that as part of a transition plan, and just add to it assignment of leases and whatever date you feel is necessary.
So the first meeting in October?
Sounds great.
Well, it depends on the responsiveness of the Wonder Gardens and whether they can work within that timeframe, but we will be working with them.
I mean, I can provide a draft for that draft to be discussed at your opportu, you know, whatever.
Okay, we'll see how it goes.
Well, and Carl, if you can add, please, there, I know you're making a list of items. If you can make sure, please, at the workshop, that the Twisted, the tenant of the Twisted Tangled Cafe is invited to participate in that workshop. I'd like council to hear from his or her mouth, I believe, what's going on there. Fred?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, could we get a draft of this thing for us to look at at our first meeting in September, so that it, we can come up with some inputs we may want to put in this thing?
I can provide a very sketchy draft, so that the draft would be available, and you could provide further direction.
Again, this is just going to be the, I hate to call it a transitional draft, a transitional thing. It's not going to be the full-blown.
That's correct. That's correct.
It's going to be the full-blown stewardship.
Okay, council, anything further on this? There are a lot, but at the moment...
I think we need to amend the motion that we made, that Greg made, and I seconded.
As I understood, the motion that, as far as what Councilmember DeWitt said, and I apologize for interrupting, but December 1st, 2017, to continue to that time and prepare a transition plan.
Oh, okay.
Okay, good.
And how do we handle the rent payments in the meantime?
At this point, that's their issue. They get the rent until such time we have assignment of those leases. So they may be perfectly happy assigning the leases to us earlier rather than later, but I don't know.
I think they should be made aware that we have reason to believe that part of that contract's not being followed with Twisted Tangle.
Well, I think that's neither here nor there. We'll just do our due diligence and try and get it fast.
I think it is here nor there. I really do. I disagree.
And I think, and I think that if I'm going to vote for anything, if there's not some provision in there where they're made to adhere to that lease that they haven't followed, I'm not going to vote for it.
I mean, we could make an emotion right now to suspend all payments from the Twisted Tangle to the Wonder Gardens pending getting some answers here.
Can't do that.
No, you cannot.
Okay, we won't do that, but here we come.
We don't have enough information about this. We need to get some feedback or authority, I agree. Let's get this, you know, we, let's get the temporary agreement in place.
Right, let's figure out our transition ideas.
But I would like a presentation from staff of these, what I call the business issues that are not straightforward, like you got to pay the rent, you got to pay the, you know, the lights and have it insured, which are kind of standard. If there are any unusual kinds of things...
Well, you will, we will do our best to get the agreement to you prior to the time that you'll be asked to actually consider it and do something with it. We will do that, and we're happy to make a presentation at the time on that. But again, we need to work with the Wonder Gardens on this as well. So my understanding is, right now, what we're talking about is extension to December 1st for the overall agreement. And we're talking about, in the interim, working on a plan for land transfer as well as a minimal operating agreement to accommodate that.
Right, and make that happen sooner than later.
Correct.
Now, we'll remedy the...
Inquire about the Twisted Tangle, so we...
And we may, and we may not have the authority, but we're operating in 100, 1,000% good faith here with 3.5 million taxpayers' dollars. We may not have the authority to ask questions about the operating agreement and where the rent money's going in lieu of us not receiving any money. But the point needs to be made, I believe it's a double standard. And I just want to be on the record as noting that.
Mr. Mayor, we're looking for a motion and a vote?
We did have the motion. Audrey, read it back. I think we're good with the motion, right? Fred, you're good with that? Okay, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Carl?
Yes, I do believe we have an errata item under my report, Mr. Mayor, and that is going to be from our communications director, Laura Taylor. Again, dealing with, guess what, special events.
Yay!
But we'll be brief.
So currently, we are asking to have the applications that are received now to go under the current ordinance, and any applications that are occurring after January 1st to be their date held, and it'll give us time to work with you to update the ordinance and to go over the processes. And then, at that point, they would come under the new ordinance. So we do not want to hold anyone up. We do not plan to. We will be working with them to hold dates, but we do not want to process anything that's going to be happening after January 1st under the old ordinance, since we will be making updates. So we're asking for permission to do that.
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Is there a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thanks. Carl, anything else?
That's all from East Street. Thank you.
Arlene? Okay. Mayor and council reports, Amy?
I'm done.
Okay. Greg?
Kind of take some, no, I'm good, because we'll have one meeting before then.
Okay, very good. Mike?
I'm good.
Fred?
Yes, I have an item here, and it's actually, I got to get Greg's concurrence on this, but what Martha pointed out about the Regional Planning Council and all that that's going on, I wondered if it would be possible, with Councilman DeWitt's permission, that I could be named as an alternate to RPC, and then if Greg can't make a meeting, I could go. Or sometimes, if we're both there, it's okay if I'm an alternate, because the way they know it's a meeting. Whereas if I just show up and Greg is there, then I'm kind of like, which is hard to do.
Greg?
I mean, I've never, I've only missed one, and I think I actually attended it by phone when I was in Indiana, so... It doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
You need to, you need to look at the bylaws of the Regional Planning Council, make sure you can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that. I don't want to do anything that's not legal by the bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We'll look into it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Approval of the minutes. And that are minutes of July 7th, August 2nd, and August 2nd budget. So there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, public comment. Members of the public that'd like to speak at this time, please come forward.
Okay, mayor, council, the Wonder Gardens. I've spoken with Janet Martin some time ago. She ran at Wonder Gardens for almost two years. She says that the $250,000 that they take in in admittance charges will carry that place. No extra money for paying mortgages and stuff. But she loved that job. The board of directors were trying to force her to raise a million dollars with a donation. She's not a donation-type person. And she said rather, she's never been fired in her life, and so she quit. As a backup to whatever the Wonder Gardens decides to do, I would suggest getting ahold of Janet Martin. She loves that job, and she'd love to have it back, so she could run it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public? Okay, seeing none? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I compliment you, Mr. Mayor. I compliment you.
Yeah?
Four minutes after 12.
All right, fantastic. Thank you.
Are you leaving now?
Um, can I pick you up?
I got my stuff here.
Oh, hop in.